That's that first thing to my head.
Quite a crowd.
Obviously.
Yeah.
Like, like, like.
It was one of the, the other crowds.
I'm trying to drink one glass of water. I cannot drink water, actually trying to drink. At least I know it.
Say it.
Other people can go to a bar.
Hey JP, a little nervous there.
Stay in my word. Say it.
How are you? You're fine.
Yeah, one minute is fair.
Oh, yeah. See, now he's gonna be nervous.
Yeah.
Geez, you guys are good. Steve's name's already on the paper.
All right. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Carrier. I serve you as Chairman of the Nashua Zoning Board. To my right is Mary Ellen McKay. She's the, serves as clerk. Going clockwise around, there's JP Boucher, who's our Vice Chair. And we have Mr. Robert Shaw and Steve Lionell, who are also members. So we have five voting members here, hopefully be able to vote on each case tonight. To my left is Mr. Carter Falk. He's a professional degree and accredited city planner. He serves the staff as Deputy Planning Manager. By New Hampshire law, this meeting is recorded on written transcripts, which are available to the public. Additionally, this is also filmed. I think we're live tonight on local TV. And the audio broadcast will be streamed, will be available on gonashua.com in a few days, so you'll be able to listen to the proceeding as well, if you like. Because of that situation, I ask that only one person speaks at a time, and each person needs to speak into the microphone. If it's not into the microphone, it won't be heard. And so I ask for that order during this meeting. Also, I'll ask that each person speaking gives their name and address, so that that can be copied in the record. If the spelling of your name isn't obvious, at least to me, I might ask you to spell that, so that we can get it right. Couple of things. If you have a cellphone, I ask you to put it on silent mode or vibrate. If you vote, if there's anyone who's not at a case at hand and would like to speak, please do so out in the hallway. We'd like to have quiet in here, and only one person speaking at a time. A copy of tonight's agenda is available in the back table there, so if anybody doesn't have a copy of tonight's agenda, please feel free to hop up and get one. Tonight, we're gonna be hearing requests for special exceptions and for variances. And I'll briefly tick through the requirements that this board needs to hear for a variance. Every case tonight is here because there's some sort of request or deviation from this thick book of Nashua code. And by New Hampshire law, there's five criteria that we need to hear for a variance. And that criteria, I'll briefly go through it. Number one is that a zoning restriction is applied to the property interferes with reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and the environment. Number two, that the spirit and intent of the ordinance must not be broken by granting the variance. Number three, that granting the variance will not adversely affect other property in the district. Number four is that granting the variance must be of benefit to the general public and not solely the individual. And number five is to not grant a variance would result in an injustice to the landowner. We're also here tonight to hear special exceptions. Special exceptions are a little bit different. Special exceptions are uses that are actually permitted in this book, but they're permitted only if certain criteria is met. And that five criteria is the first, it must be listed in the table of use as a special exception. In those cases before us tonight, all meet that criteria. Number two is that the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Number three is that the requested use will not overload any public water drainage sewer or sewer system or any other municipal system, such as, it would be subject, the city would be subjected to hazards affecting the health, safety, or general welfare. Number four is that any special regulations for use set forth in other sections of the zoning ordinance are fulfilled. And number five of five, again for a special exception, is that the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining zones, or be detrimental to the health morals or welfare of the residents of Nashua. The presentation tonight, first, the applicant will go first. The applicant will have up to 15 minutes to present their case. There's a timer that we have. That'll tick down from 15 minutes. The light will be green for the first 14 minutes, and then from minute 14 to 15, it'll be yellow. At 15, it'll turn red. And I'll be asking you to stop if you haven't concluded your presentation at that time. The board's likely to ask questions at the end of your presentation or along the way. After the applicant has spoken, anybody else who wants to speak in favor of the application has up to five minutes to speak. Five minutes for anybody else who wants to speak in favor of the application. After all positive testimony is exhausted, the board will then hear from anyone with opposition or questions or concerns about the application. Each person with questions or concerns will have up to five minutes to present their case. If there is opposition presented, then the applicant will have five minutes back at the microphone to address that opposition. And then finally, the last word you might say is one and only one person who has spoken in opposition, if there has been opposition, will have five minutes at the microphone to present their final case or to speak to what the applicant has just spoken about. That is the order of testimony that we'll hear, and that is the public hearing portion of the meeting. Each case has two, two sections, you might say. The first section is the public hearing, where this board hears from you. The second case is the second part of that, each case is the public meeting. And the public meeting is where we will deliberate as a board here in front of you and likely render a decision. Positive, negative, or table typically are the three options. And then that will end the case. Each citizen, each party of standing has a right to contest whatever decision we come to. That right to contest it is a request for rehearing. So if you feel that you want to request a rehearing, you have 30 days to do so, starting with the day after today. And if you had, if you wanted to complete a request to rehear a case, you could give Mr. Falk a call, and he could help walk you through that. Let's see. I guess, before we get going tonight, are there any questions by anyone in the audience about what we're going to go over? All right, we do, I'd like to tick through the agenda, because there have been a couple of changes to it. The first case, which is Crimson Properties, 699 West Hollis Street. That was scheduled to go before us tonight. That has been postponed until April 11th. So 699 West Hollis Street is postponed till April 11th. 15 Tarrer Boulevard, the John J. Flatley Company, which was for a sign variance. That was supposed to be tonight. That has also been postponed to April 11th. And the third case, 18 Legacy Drive, oh, we'll be hearing that tonight. So it's just the two, the first two were tabled. Again, are there any questions from anyone in the audience tonight? I don't see any questions. I think we're ready to get started. I'd like to open the public hearing on case number three. If we look in case number three, the applicant is Carrie N. and Rhett Petrie are the owners, 18 Legacy Drive. This is a request for the following variances. One, to encroach four feet into the six-foot required right side yard setback. And number two is to encroach four feet into the six-foot required rear yard setback. And both requests are to install a 10-by-14 shed. This is in Ward 5 in the R8 zone. Is either of the Petries here tonight? How you doing? If you'd like to come to the microphone and just give us your name and address for the record, you could feel free to lift that microphone up a little bit, get a little closer.
My name's Rhett Petrie. Last name's P-I-T-R-E. First name's Rhett, R-H-E-T-T. Live at 18 Legacy Drive with my wife Carrie Petrie. As, as Mr. Carrier had said, I'm here for variance upon the, for property lines, both property lines, for my shed that I'd like to install. Right away, I'm gonna actually withdraw the, the application to encroach and put the shed two foot, two foot. After talking to my neighbor and being very, very kind to her, I'm gonna move it out further from her property line. So I'd actually like to move it within four feet from the property line. So I'll be only taking two foot of that six-foot encroachment.
Just to clarify, I think that would be the right side encroachment?
Yes, sir, that would be right.
Yeah. So, okay, got it.
And then on the backside of the property, there's a six-foot, it can be allocated a six-foot there. But I was looking at putting it at three foot onto the property line. So I'd only be requesting three feet. Reason I'm doing so is to, to keep my neighbor at number 20 happy. She's, she and I are both very much into plants. And I'm just trying to hide the shed a little bit by putting some orient, some, some natural grass, some tall grass and hiding the shed. But all in all, the hardship of my property is, I've got the smallest property in my, in my neighborhood. Used to be a cow field, and now it's a series of, well, I think we have something along the lines of 40-something on homes. My property has the smallest lot at .217 of an acre. And I'm abutting against conservation land as well as some common space, about half acre of common space. I see some folks looking at pictures there. The back area, as you can see, is common. There's nothing there that would be threatened upon encroaching on that space. So if I put the shed on the left side of my property, I'd be closer to conservation land. And I was fearing that maybe I would somehow or another display some water. So I put it on the right side. After talking to my neighbor at number 20, she said absolutely, it's fine. No reasons that I object to this. And she's not here today, so after I invited her multiple times, she's in all, in all favor of the shed being placed there. So a couple of other points I had. I don't see any interference of the neighbors, the neighbors' properties, the neighborhood aesthetics. It is a top-of-the-line Reed's Ferry Shed. The appeal of it is gonna be top-notch. So I look at y'all as your, I look at you, to you guys and ma'am, for your favor of my request.
All right, thanks, Mr. Petrie. Are there any questions for the applicant, Mr. Lionell?
I'm well familiar with Reed's Ferry Sheds, having put a 10-by-14 on my own property. Had a couple of questions. You said in your application that you were reducing the roof height. What is the roof height going to be?
There were a couple of options that Reed's had. They had, the style that I looked at. It had a series of pitch. I don't remember the pitch, but I had opted for a lower pitch in order to help out my neighbor at number 20. So she can look out her sunroom and have a more of a pleasant view.
The reason I bring that up is that the city use codes also place a limit, a height limit on accessory buildings of 12 feet within 10 feet of a property line.
It would be below 12 feet, yes.
So the peak of the roof would be below 12 feet?
Absolutely, it would be below 12 feet.
Okay. You also had said that, that you, if you, if you didn't, weren't able to put it where you wanted it, that you couldn't drive a vehicle back there. Looking at the, the map of the, of the lot, it, it looks like there's quite a bit of space there. What is exactly the hardship of not putting it in the required setback?
So the area of the common space is quite a bit of space there. The, the space between my, my shed, proposed shed, and the deck of my property off the side, off the back of the house, there's some stairs that come down, which protrude off the back of the house. In order to, to get a vehicle in the back of the home, in order to access the lower basement, walkout basement, it'll be more difficult if I was to put it at the six-foot and six-foot. With the vegetation that I plan on planting to make it nicer to number 20, Legacy Drive.
You're aware that when they prepare the pad or foundation for the shed, that that extends out a little bit from the side of the shed as well, about one and a half to two feet, at least from my shed.
One foot crushed stone, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And I've factored that into my plan of how I'm laying this out.
Okay, that's all for me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lionell. Anybody else with questions? All right, no more questions, so feel free to have a seat. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the proposed shed at 18 Legacy Drive? Is there anyone with questions, concerns about the proposed shed at 18 Legacy Drive? Questions or concerns? I'm not seeing any questions or concerns. So with that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the case? Anybody who'd like to kick off? Mr. Shaw?
I'm okay with it, especially I think, you know, the most impacted person is, is immediate neighbor to the right. And with, with the, both the conversations and the adjustment that he made, I think it's, I don't see any issue.
All right, Mr. Boucher?
I have no issue. I was wondering why the shed wasn't gonna be put on the other side. But, you know, obviously, there's a concern there for the conservation area. But, you know, that's fine on this side. Obviously, he's taken much care to appease, you know, any concerns that anybody else would have had, so I'm good with the application.
Sure. Ms. McKay?
I concur with my colleagues. I think that he went above and beyond. He could have put it there. She was fine with it there, and he still moved it. He meets all the requirements, the height requirements, as Mr. Lionell pointed out. I have no problem.
Mr. Lionell, thoughts on that?
I'm okay with this. A little bit uneasy, but I, but I, it seems that there's, there really should be enough room. But given that the encroachment has been reduced, and keeping in mind that variances are forever and neighbors are not, but I, I still think it would be okay.
All right. And my thoughts on the matter is, you know, I, I, I'm okay with it also. I, you know, I had a concern when I looked at the site and thought, well, you know, there's kind of, seems to me to be a nice common area in the back, and would this be kind of close to that? But it's, you know, I don't live there, and I, I'm more in tune to what people who live there think, and there's been no opposition. And I also, you know, he could put a shed just a few feet over by right, and he's just asking for a few more feet. And we, we hear a lot of that, and it's pretty common, because folks wanna have a little more usable space in the yard. And so I'm okay with it. I think there's enough room. Like you said, he has a plan for vegetation to appease the neighbor. So I think, I think there's five of us in support. Is there anyone who'd like to make a motion? I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion on behalf of Carrie and Rhett Petrie. Again, the address is 18 Legacy Drive. The request is the following two in variant, two variances. The first is to encroach two feet into the six-foot right side yard setback, which is a two-foot reduction from the as-advertised right side yard setback. And to encroach three feet into the six-foot rear yard setback, which is a one-foot reduction from what was advertised. And both requests are to install a 10-by-14 foot shed. The variance, I think this board finds that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, which is to maximize the usable yard space and keep the shed maximized away from the conservation area on the other side of the property, on the left side. I think the board finds that this request is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. I think the board finds it'll not adversely affect property values of the surrounding parcels. I think the board is also persuaded by the applicant's testimony that he'll be putting some vegetation around the shed, as was discussed with the abutter. I think the board finds it was not contrary to public interest and substantial justice is served. So I make a motion to approve the two-foot right side yard setback and three-foot rear yard setback. Is there a second to the motion, Mr. Boucher? Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor, so that's unanimous. So your application is approved tonight. And again, there's something I didn't mention earlier, but it goes for every application, is there's a 30-day window of appeal. So any party of standing, as I did mention about the request for rehearing, not that there was any opposition tonight. I would exercise caution with that, because if a rehearing request were to come in within 30 days, we would consider it. If the board deliberated and felt the rehearing request had merit, then the approval would be stayed, and, you know, and the case would be reheard. So personally, I'd exercise caution for that 30 days, but right now, you've got a permit to do so.
I understand.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you for your consideration.
All right. So with that, I'll close the public hearing on, public meeting on case number three. All right, have a good evening. I'd like to open the public meeting on case number four. The applicant is CPC Investments LLC. I'm sorry, that's the owner. The address is 62 to 64 Lake Street. The request is a variance for minimum lot area. 23,590 square feet is existing. 27,878 square feet is required. The request for this is to convert an existing two-family building into a three-family building and construct an additional five-unit multifamily building. And I think our timer has died, so we'll go with my stopwatch. Oh, maybe you could just wiggle that power cord. See if it comes back to life. Oh, we're ready. So now we can hold Mr. Maynard to his 15 minutes.
Good evening, folks. For the record, my name is Richard Maynard, Professional Engineer with Maynard Parkhead of Nashua, representing the property owner and the applicant, CPC Investments LLC, located at 17 Marshall Street, Nashua. Property before the board is located at 6264 Lake Street, also known as map 101-Hot 160. It consists of a large two-family building and a standalone garage to the rear on 23,589 square feet of land. Proposal is indicated on the ZBA plot plan, which I have up on the wall, is to convert the eight-bedroom existing duplex into three units, three bedrooms each. Five new residential units would be constructed to the rear. They would have two-car garages on the first floor and two upper floors of living space. The existing garage in this particular area would be razed. With regard to the ZBA criteria, the area is zone RC, multifamily, but it is really a mixed-use district, with commercial and industrial buildings, major nursing homes, elderly housing companies, and numerous, numerous little businesses. As indicated on the area-wide neighborhood map, which I hope everybody has in their packet, by the darkened lots, there are 34 lots that have less than the RC zone required density of 3484 square feet per unit. Of these, at least 25 properties have a residential density more dense and allowed, or less than 3,000 square foot per unit. So with all, with our eight units, we are requesting a density of 2949 square feet per unit, just under the neighborhood typical density of 3,000 square feet. Very much in character with the existing neighborhood. The property is within walking distance of Main Street and the Main Street marketplace plaza commonly known, formerly known as Seminole Plaza and the rest of downtown. This area is also close to the downtown D-zone, whereas if the property were actually in the downtown D-zone, then unlimited residential density would be allowed. In regard to public interest, this project will help address a need for middle-income housing within and close to the proximity to the downtown. The building has asbestos single siding, which will be able to be removed and replaced with this project, an important public health consideration. This is an older neighborhood, and new construction will definitely enhance neighborhood property values. Granting of this variance for the eight units would be due justice to the applicant, as it would allow rehabilitation of a property in somewhat very much in character with the neighbors. This proposed multifamily project conforms to the RC zone, is very much in character with the neighborhood, is very much in the spirit of the ordinance. In summary, project is very much in character with the existing neighborhood. It provides much-needed moderate-income housing. It removes asbestos siding from the building. And finally, it upgrades and improves an existing older building, thus enhancing neighborhood property values. The board's granting of this simple variance would benefit my client as well as the city as a whole. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Maynard. Any questions? Mr. Shaw?
So I guess one thing, I just wanna, the property adjacent, it's got five units.
I can't hear you. What?
The property that's, that's adjacent to, that's got five units, so it would be, you have that highlight marked as bold, but it looks like your calculation is 3886 square feet per unit, which, which would meet regulation.
A few of the properties are just marked as being multifamily. You have to read the actual square footage in the thing, so that property.
I thought you, you were saying that all the ones marked in, in the dark outline were ones.
I didn't say all. I said the ones marked, but maybe I misspoke.
I think you did, but now you've clarified, so, so I just, so I can't just glance at this and.
Specifically written on each particular.
Yeah, that's what I was seeing, and it didn't make sense.
The numbers I told you, I have nothing to do with a five-unit building and meets the density next door, so.
So I guess my other question is, how many units could you place a meat code?
By, by ordinance. By ordinance, 6.7 or eight, less than seven, 6.8.
So what, what shows you to pursue eight instead of six?
Well, we're so close to seven, and then, and.
Another bite of apple.
And the applicant, yes.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Sit on the property and things like that.
Any other questions for Mr. Maynard? Mr. Boucher?
We're on the same line, and I'm just, just following through. So the property in the front, right, you're gonna, did I hear right? You're gonna rehab that?
Yes.
Right.
That's an older building. It's, a lot of the porches are gonna be taken off. The siding is asbestos, it needs to be removed.
So, so that, that building itself, you're gonna be putting three units in that building?
Correct.
And, and, so I guess I can maybe see, you know, kind of what you're doing. But those will be very different than what you're gonna, what you're proposing for the rear, as far as.
Be two, two different styles here.
Right.
A rehabbed, a older building, have a different thing, and very modern buildings in the back with two-car garages.
All right, and, and it's just from my understanding, the square footage of the units that would be in the front of the building, how do they compare to the square footage of living space that'll be in the back? I know this has nothing to do with it, but it just gives me a perspective of what you're putting in that front building.
The ones in the back, I didn't anticipate this question. Let me think here a minute. We have about 1,200 square feet, I think the number is, in the back of living space.
Right.
I don't know what it is in the front, but I suspect it'll be on the order of 1,000, because the existing units are four-bedroom units, pretty large apartment.
Right.
Typically, 1,600, 1,800 square feet in size. I'm guessing here, though, but, so that's just based on my general experience in these things. So.
And then.
The ones in the back would be somewhat larger than average, and the ones in the front would be under the average.
And the ones in the front don't have garages, right? They're just, they're just more like.
They use the open parking spaces.
Parking spaces, right.
They'd obviously be lower rent than the ones in the back.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Just have a question on the parking spaces. Is it, you know, I see from the view and the. Is it, you know, I see from the view and the description, the new units are parked under, parking on the first floor, which are pretty analogous to the units just to the east of that.
It's almost the same.
Looks exactly the same to me, yeah. And is the parking underneath, how many vehicles are accommodated there?
Two spaces per new unit.
Two spaces under each unit?
Yeah.
And then I see three parking spaces that are like outdoors. Are those the ones for unit one, two, and three?
There's four. There's two up here?
Yeah.
And there's two down here.
Oh, okay. I was wondering about those, like where do those get access from?
Because there is a common driveway easement all along this property line that goes all the way through the back. If you drove there, that driveway is a driveway easement, and it serves this garage in the back, and it serves the properties back there. So that's a common driveway easement that already exists.
I didn't realize that. So there's a driveway on the right-hand side that allows you to get to those two parking spaces there.
How's yours is it, as well as if you see, as you describe in the rear?
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. Thank you for that.
Took us a while to figure out what the heck was going on there, but...
So that's an easement that this property has the right to use?
Both properties on either side of this line share that easement.
Okay.
Share that driveway.
And that's in your deed?
That's in a separate deed, but yes, it's in the registry documents.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Maynard? All right. I guess I had one other. Like if we went down that driveway on the right-hand side beyond the house that's in the front, then you have that like strip of land that runs to the west a little? It's kind of green on that map there?
There's all the grass there.
Yeah, is that what, is that just a yard at this point? Is that the...
There's the yard with the garage right here.
The one to be raised, okay.
The one to be raised. That driveway, the most one there comes around and goes to that garage. That's the access to there.
Okay. So on yours, where that's green, that's the grass?
That's grass. That's all open space for the...
Okay.
There it is.
All right. Thanks. I didn't, I was trying to vision where the grass and driveway were, but that's, it's clear on that one. Yep? All right. Thank you. I don't think there's any other questions. So I think we're all set. You can have a seat. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this proposed development at 62 to 64 Lake Street? Is there any questions, concerns, or opposition? 62 to 64 Lake Street, the proposed rehab and five new units, any opposition? See no opposition, so I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts on the case? Anyone like to kick off, Mary, Ms. McKay?
I don't think I, I mean, Mr. Shaw asked the question I thought about with, you know, the 6.8, kept them within the ordinance, why go for the 1.2? But other than that, it seems like it will address the needs of the neighborhood. It's aesthetically pleasing. I don't really have any objection. There's nobody here that's objecting to this.
Mr. Boucher? I'm going clockwise here.
So I, you know, I'm familiar with the area, and, you know, I did record...
Could you maybe speak a little closer into the mic? I think it comes a little out, a little better.
I know the area, and I was, I knew that there was a common driveway there. I didn't, you know, this was really kind of what I was trying to figure out what was going on with the, with the front unit there. I, I actually am in favor of the application. This is why. It was, it's, the fact that the, you know, this was maybe three more brand-new units all the way down the strip, you know, that would maybe have probably a little concern. But the fact that Mr. Maynard expressed exactly what they're going to do with the front unit and what that is, and having that structure there, for me, it kind of, it doesn't blind the whole, the whole, of the six units in the back, the five units in the back, but it kind of makes it, to me, more aesthetically pleasing. So we're leaving them as existing structure. We're going to reuse that. You know, obviously, he expressed that they're going to be rental units, three units, so it makes, that makes sense to me. So with that, and with the way the property is laid out, I'm generally in favor of the application. I don't really see anything that, for me, in my mind, that would give me great concern. Again, I think this has a lot to do with the existing structure being left in place and the other ones pretty much being lined up behind it. And obviously, you know, we have, we have a rendering, and I know that sometimes it can look a little bit different, but I think that, you know, somebody spent a lot of time doing this. So looking at that several times and driving by several times, I think that it'll fit in quite nice with that neighborhood. So I don't have any issues with that, you know. And, you know, there's no, there's no, we don't have any, you know, sometimes we have projects where we're encroaching, right, on setbacks, you know, and side yards and rires, but there's none of that in this project. So this appears to me, you know, something that was, you know, thought out and, again, not impacting other areas that we'd be concerned about or that I would be concerned about, so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I guess, I mean, I think it looks like a nice project. I just don't see the justification that gets it to the eight units. And I appreciate that there's a mix of kind of density and certainly the multifamily, no question about that. I guess I'm much more open to the idea of supporting the seven units than knowing that it's very close to that. And I think if that had been what we were presented in the first place, I think I would be much more open to it. So I'm, if somebody's willing to, depending on where we're at, I might very well support seven units. It would put us much closer to meeting the requirements, but I just, I don't see the justification for going to the eight units.
Okay. Mr. Lionel?
I echo Mr. Shaw's comments. When I first looked at this, I saw, you know, I thought eight was maybe a little bit too much. Seven using the existing building and keeping that as two apartments, that seems reasonable. Other than that, it's a, it's a nice approach, a nice development, and certainly affordable housing is, more affordable housing is important to the downtown area.
All right. I guess where I'm at is I'm, I was, before the meeting tonight, I was on the fence about, you know, the seven versus eight. On one hand, when I looked at the site, I was kind of surprised. What pushed me to be more favorable to this is the five unit that's just to the east of it. I didn't really know that was there. I did drive in the driveway of that place, and that seems to be functioning okay. You know, but on the other hand, I do find that, you know, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing a need for the eight versus the seven. I mean, I guess I feel like Mr. Lionel and Mr. Shaw in that I'm completely okay with the seven because that's close to what the requirements allow. I'm struggling to see what, what the hardship is or the need for the eight. And I guess that's where I'm at, but I'm, I'm open to persuasion either way. And so I don't know if there's anybody else who wants to speak up. Ms. McKay?
I'm good with seven or eight, but I think I understand if that was me, the logic would be if I went to eight, it would be one more home that somebody could have that would be close to the downtown. So I understand that argument. I don't know. I think if it was gonna not fit in or look overly cumbersome, then I might have an issue. But based on the rendering, I don't think that's going to be the case. So I could support seven or eight.
Do you want to?
Just an additional thought, and just my opinion is, I don't believe that the applicant's going to take out, let's say we had seven, you know, I don't think that the applicant would be, I'm just surmising this, right? I'm not going to take out one of the new condos or the new, the new units, right? I'm going to make the front unit maybe just two, right? It's bigger now. Now, and so I'm going to say I can make it bigger and more rent. There's going to be more space in them. So we don't know who would be renting it, but you could have the same number of people living in two units that you would have in the three, you know? So, and I don't know, you know, what else would actually change. I don't think the parking would change. I don't think any of that would change, you know? I think most likely their opportunity would be to, to just change that structure on the front. So again, personal opinion, you know, especially because it's an existing structure that's there, that's where I'm coming from. So this is why, again, I would, obviously, if the majority of the board was going to vote for seven, I'm not going to hold up an application because I don't agree with it. What I'm saying is that I can see the, you know, the three units in the front. And that's really how I'm looking at it. I'm not looking at it as the, you know, I'm looking at it as it's two or three in the front. And again, they're not, it's not garages, it's not units like that. It's just strictly maybe just smaller square footage units, so.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's how we're looking at it.
I'd like to maybe just touch on the two again. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Shaw?
No, but I mean, I appreciate your points, and I think it gives me some further kind of consideration because, I mean, I guess the one thing I would just note is if we did go to seven instead of eight, the parking requirement actually does lessen by code, but I don't know that that would actually change what's applied. So I think that becomes probably a move point anyhow. And I do think that, I mean, I guess, and I, one of the problems I had perhaps in the way I was viewing it, and it's really perhaps up to, you know, how the property would get developed ultimately, but I was thinking, oh, you know, the five units would go down to four and continue with the front three. But your point, and I guess in the end, it could go either way, and it's really, I mean, unless we want to actually bring Mr. Maynard back up for some clarification there, I'm still not sure that's going to necessarily completely, you know, sway our opinion one way or the other. But I wasn't thinking about it the way you were, and I, it does give me some further thought here.
So two things, like if the, if the front building was two, and again, we don't know exactly what the plans were, the front building was two or three aesthetically, except for maybe an extra door, you probably wouldn't know the difference, right? We could, I'm asking if we could, could we stipulate that, how that, that is, that there's, the eight units is split up with three in the main front building and five in the back? Could that be stipulated as a condition for the planning board to be more concise of what they're looking at? Or like you said, we should, you know, if Mr. Maynard would give more, you know, information that we'd want to hear, that's the other option. But, I mean, could we also say, hey, this is how we're looking at it? The front building would have three units, and if it's anything different than where we would be, again, maximum five units in the back and three in the front. Maximum three in the front. Something like that, yeah.
I guess I'd like to just kind of hear the rest of the thoughts right now, too, so...
Yeah. I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add, Mr. Lionel?
The five in the back doesn't, doesn't bother me at all. It's the three in the front that I thought that maybe they were, that was a bit too I don't have a strong feeling about it, but that was just my initial inclination, and nothing I've seen here has changed that.
I guess, you know, after listening to Mr. Boucher, and again, getting back to when I, you know, spent some time at the property just to the east of it, which I remember is five units and is going to look just like this one. And because when I first got the application, I said, geez, this seems pretty dense, but then when I'm there, I'm like, well, there's a functioning property just like it 50, 100 feet away. So I guess, you know, I, I would think that the back five is going to remain a back five, even if we stipulated seven. And so I, I guess, I think I could support the eight as it's proposed because of, you know, it's so analogous to the budding property to it. It's essentially the same thing. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, and I think to follow up on a few of the other things, I mean, Mr. Boucher mentioned, kind of, I think without stating it explicitly, I think that's what you were leading up to, the idea that the front building, whether it's divided into two or three units, is probably going to support ultimately the same total number of bedrooms, the same maybe total number of people living in it. And so whether, whichever way it's divided is maybe not really going to get to a, that impactful of a ultimate usage or not in terms of the area, in terms of, you know, the kind of the real effect of density of what's going on. So I think that's, that's actually also pretty important in the scheme of things. And so, I mean, you, and I know the other point you had made is that everything else about this is all the setbacks are met, the open space is met. So, I mean, we've certainly had plenty of applications where we're talking about multifamilies that have no parking, have no open space, you know, things that are, it's just like, you know, really shoehorned in here. And granted, I think there's probably ways that they could have looked at something denser and even asked for greater relief and said, hey, there's, you know, other properties here that are less than 2,000 square feet per unit. So, you know, at least I'll give credit there that it's not, things aren't so wedged in. We're talking about other kinds of items. And I think the thing that makes this a little bit unique is that there is an existing structure and a proposed new structure. So it's not the same as just coming in with one new proposal to put in six or seven or eight or some other number of units. So we are kind of in that kind of redevelop, repurpose, and add to. So I guess I'm feeling like there's enough of these other considerations that I can support the eight after all, as much as I didn't think I could.
Could I tap into you, Mr. Boucher, to make a motion?
Sure. And add whatever you need to add, whatever I miss. So before we do that, do we want to stipulate in the break up, the units in the back and the front, more to be more concise of what we're approving? Would that make sense?
I think by proposal, it was stated that three in the front and five in the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's what I think.
So I think my application, right, is...
Yeah, I think existing two family in the front, they would add one unit in the front and five in the back.
Converged.
Okay, all right.
I think it's covered, yeah.
All right. So you, all right, so we're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance for CPC Investments LLC, addresses 62 to 64 Lake Street. They are requesting a variance for minimum lot area of 23,590 square feet existing, 27,878 square feet required, to convert an existing two-family building into a three-family building and to construct an additional five-unit multifamily building. This is in the RC zone, code section is 190-16, table 16-3. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. We spoke about the fact that there's an existing structure on the property, and there was further discussion on, where the majority of the board felt that the net effect of having two units or three units in the front building, in the existing two-family building being converted, may not have, may, is, we discussed that there may not be a net effect of that as far as the density of people living there for that reason. And again, we also stated that, again, the unique shape of the property and the fact that there is no other variances needed for this property... and the fact that there is no other, uh, variances needed for, um, this property as it's, as it's proposed. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. It is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We have, um, we have looked at, we have had, uh, this, uh, displays of what the, um, other properties are in the area and we had discussions in comparison to the property next door to it, the five-unit property, and, uh, how this is somewhat very similar. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice would be served.
So we have a motion on the table to approve as applied. Is there a second to the motion, Mr. Shaw? Any discussion on the motion? See what a good motion that was? No discussion on it. Show of hands in favor of the motion. So that's unanimous? So, uh, Mr. Maynard, your, uh, application is approved and I know you're well aware of the thirty-day window of appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
And with that, I'd like to close the, uh, public hearing on case number three. I'm sorry, case number four that was. Moving right on, we're still good to go here. Case.
Take two minutes only, just two minutes.
Okay, we're going to take a couple-minute recess here and then we'll get right back into session. So feel free to chit-chat away while we're in recess here.
It's freezing.
We had an appraisal done, um, and the appraisal came back and it, uh, we learned at that time that retail wouldn't be a byright use. That obviously affects the highest and best use of the property. We're looking to maximize the value of this land, uh, to, to help pay off the bonds for the Broad Street Parkway. And so I'm here before you tonight, uh, asking for, for this consideration. I would note that, uh, this wouldn't give us any special treatment and it is, uh, keeping with consistent, uh, conditions along the corridor and maintains the character of, of the neighborhood.
All right, thanks, Mr. Cummings. Any questions, Mr. Shaw?
So is the, is the drawing just kind of a what-if? It's not part of any real plan at this point, just a kind of?
As, as the application notes, it's a, it's a concept plan. It does articulate what, uh, a maximum build-out could potentially look like. I would suggest to you that you won't see something as dense actually on the site. Probably would be in the range of about a five thousand square foot structure. And what you currently see in front of you is approximately seven thousand square feet.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions? I guess I don't really have a question, it's just a comment, uh, you know, times gone by, but certainly there was retail there before, as your application says. There was, there was a strip of retail businesses there, uh, for quite some time, as long as I've been around in the town, anyway. But it's not really a question, it's just a comment. So we don't have any other questions, so you could have a seat. We'll see what anybody else has to say. Is there anyone else, uh, here to speak in favor of this, uh, use variance request by our fair city at, uh, forty-four Broad Street? Is there anyone with questions or concerns? Hi ma'am, if you'd like to come to the microphone and give us your name and address and let us know what's on your mind, we'd like to hear from you.
Hello, um, my name's Tracy Dunn, I live at twelve Long Ave. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I guess my questions are just what retail space meant, um, as far as hours. Right now, I've been there for thirty years and there are several businesses in the area, which we don't have any problems with. I guess my concerns would be if it was maybe a bar or restaurant, things that are open later. Because right now, we're very lucky that we have different businesses that close earlier, like maybe five in the afternoon, like the bank, uh, is right there. So I guess those are some of my questions and once, maybe what the retail space meant and what the variance is given, can they change it from maybe, I don't know, a store to a bar? So those are the questions and.
I turn to my left, uh, Mr. Falk, uh, for his professional answer of, uh, what your, your opinion is of that.
Well, a bar or a restaurant is a different use category in our table of uses. We've got about three hundred uses that are itemized in our code and they've applied for retail use. So anything that's not retail, they'd have to come back to the board. Just, just retail.
I, I guess that was my biggest concern about the hours and different things like that. Because right now, we're fortunate enough where the businesses close at a reasonable time, where we don't have to hear anything or deal with some of those issues that come along with that.
Well, it's, it's a valid concern. I, I'm glad you brought it up because I, I, when you were saying that, I thought, wow, that would be, you know, a, a more of a, uh, noise issue, but, uh, it's clarified that it's retail only, which is not an establishment like a bar or nightclub. All right.
That's my question at this point, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Actually, let me just see if there's anybody else with questions. Are you going to have a seat, ma'am? Is there anyone else with questions or concerns? I think that was it. So, Mr. Cummings, uh, that's actually by, by our bylaws. You have five minutes to, uh, address that. I, perhaps we've answered it, but.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the, to the board. Just to quickly address upon the, uh, the comments made. The corridor itself naturally lends itself to more of a dry goods type use or professional services, medical, um, type of retail. So that would be the type of uses we would be looking to see, um, along that, along that corridor with more of a traditional type of, uh, business operation type, type hours. We've already spoken to, uh, retail brokers that specialize, um, in this type of development and that's, that's the leading thought process right now as to what you'd eventually see on that type of, uh, that, that land area.
All right, thanks. Any questions for Mr. Cummings? All right, thank you. Just wanted to say, ma'am, were you, did you have anything else to say? Were you okay with what you've heard here tonight? Just shaking your head, you're okay, so.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, open the public meeting. Thoughts on the case, Mr. Lionel?
I have no issues with this.
Okay, Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm fine with it and I think that probably one of the most compelling things, and you noted it in your commentary, is that this had been for many, many, many years retail space. And so it's really just, kind of was all interrupted by the Broad Street Parkway and the uncertainties of how things were going to develop there. But, so to me, this, while granted, it's truly not, we can't just say that's the, the reason to, uh, support this. I think, I think the justifications were, you know, already made in the application, the nature of this corridor and again, the history, I think they all play to it as being, uh, quite a reasonable, uh, use. And it's, and it being limited as well, not just opening up to any sort of commercial activity.
All right, Mr. Boucher?
I also agree with Mr. Shaw and, you know, and the fact that there is a major corridor, the Broad Street Parkway, that's right there now, which kind of does change the area a little bit. So I think it even makes more sense now than it would have probably made years ago, so.
All right, Mr. McKay?
I agree, seems to be coming back full circle. And the city did apply for retail use, so they're looking and as Mr. Cummings stated, they've already spoken to retail brokers. I think they're looking to keep in, you know, it's keeping with the neighborhood. It's right there where it should be and, um, I like that it responded to the one concern that was brought up about the noise or the late hours. So my head city is doing the right thing.
Yeah, right. And I'm in agreement also for what we stated. You know, I think the application has, has written to me, that stands, stands on its own merit there. And again, I appreciate the, uh, the neighbor coming up and with that good question and appreciate that. Uh, would someone like to make a motion? Mr. Shaw?
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner, City of Nashua. The applicant is Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development for the City of Nashua. The address is forty-four Broad Street. And the variance request is for a use variance to allow for the construction of a new building for retail use. And the zoning district is GI slash HB. Uh, this is in the, uh, code section one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, number one sixteen. So the zoning restriction as applied interferes with the landowner's reasonable use of the property, considering the unique setting of the property and its environment. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purposes of zoning ordinance and the specific restriction of the property. The variance would not injure the public or private rights of others. As noted, this property had been a long historical use of retail, uh, retail purposes and was more or less interrupted to construct the Broad Street Parkway. And, uh, now the, uh, the time has come for this property to be, uh, basically sold by the city and, uh, allowed for other usages. And with this variance, uh, it'd be the limited to retail use, which also, again, is consistent with previous use and will not necessarily be, uh, any, any significant burden on the surrounding community. There's a kind of mixed use in this area already and this is a corridor with a lot of other retail use already. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Uh, there's no indication of any adverse effect on, uh, surrounding, uh, property values. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. And again, I move to approve this use variance.
Motion on the table to approve, is there a second to the motion? Uh, Mr. Lionel's hand was in the air. Uh, any, uh, discussion on the motion? No discussion? A show of hands in favor of the emotion, uh, motion for forty-four Broad Street is unanimous. So, Mr. Cummings, that's approved and I'm sure you know the thirty-day window of appeal. With that, I'll close the, uh, public meeting on case number five. Moving on to case number six, I'd like to open the public meeting. Uh, the case number six, the address is two sixty-six Broad Street. The owner is the estate of Estelle Berthwein and the applicant is La Favor Folio LLC. There's two variance requests before us tonight. The first is for minimum lot frontage. Sixty feet is required, fifty feet is proposed. And number two, that is minimum lot width, seventy-five feet is required and again, fifty is proposed. And this is the subdivide one lot into three lots. We're at Ward One in the R-nine zone. Good evening. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Gerald Prunier. I'm an attorney of officers at the Porton Trafalgar Square in Nashua, here representing the applicant this evening.
This is one large lot on Broad Street.
Attorney Prunier, you'll probably have to either grab the mic or?
Actually, you could pull that right out as you probably know it.
Thanks.
There you go. Now we'll get every word. Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
This is a very large lot owned by Mrs. Berthwein for a long time. She is deceased and, uh, now the estate is selling this particular piece of property. What the applicant would like to do is to keep the house. It's a very nice house and I'm sure that all of you have seen it on the property. They're going to have to remove the garage and with those, um, removal of the garage and the moving of the driveway to the other side of the house, they can meet all of the requirements for the R-nine district as to density and setbacks, except for one. And that's in this area here where sixty feet is required for frontage. Only fifty can be met. And why that's the case is that because we don't want to move the house. In the house, we want to make it out a conforming lot to meet all of the requirements. So it's because of the little house that we're requiring the, uh, variance for the ten feet over in this particular area. The second variance is the one that's always causes the problem of here, that it's a, you have to measure the width twenty feet from the street and it's got to be seventy-five feet, which is, doesn't make sense when the frontage requirement of the ordinance is sixty feet. So, um, it's, it's, it's a variance, I mean, it's a, a regulation that was passed mainly for cul-de-sacs, but it's, unfortunately applies for everything. And it helps me because it keeps me busy coming here requesting variances on it. Maybe when I retire, I'll try and get that one removed, if it's not necessary. So that is the, the only, really the variance that we're requiring is up in this particular area. There will be new houses. The present house that exists there is well-maintained and, uh, is a very good-looking house. The, um, spirit of the ordinance is met in that we meet all of the requirements for density. It's, it's an R-nine district and all the lots are much larger than, than, not much larger, one of them's just a little bit larger, but the others are much larger than the R-nine. The, um, density, I mean, the site and back and rear yards, uh, are all met for the ordinance. And we have met with the, these two abutters and we have agreed to put a screening. agreed to put a screening fence. And I use the word screening fence because it may be a vinyl fence that they may request, or it may be a, what's the wooden one?
Stockade.
Pardon? Stockade fence, stockade fence. We, if you, if the variance is to be granted, and you want to make a stipulation that a screening fence be done, and before we go through with the planning board, we will make sure that both of the two butters are happy whatever the fence is. We want to make them happy. It's, as I say, it's within the spirit of the ordinance, except for this little 10 feet. It's not gonna affect the valuation of the surrounding properties. The houses will all be, will be new houses. The present house that exists is in very good shape. It will provide a very good use of the property for the owner. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Prunier?
So, I have a question. I took a look at the site before we got the plans, and I was just wondering on, if we're looking at the existing house, there's like a little structure, so to speak, on the left side of it. And, you know, the minimum building setback, you know, you have right to the, what is that structure on the side of the house?
Garage?
No, it's right, keep going, yeah, that thing right there. I didn't know if that was hard structure or a shed or something.
You know, I didn't, when I looked at it, I didn't recognize it.
Well, I guess the reason I was asking was, in my mind, you're requesting the lot line where it is, because you specifically said it, because you want to meet all the building setbacks. And so, the building setback or the dash line is right adjacent to the corner of that. And I would just, you know, didn't know what that was.
I don't know. If it interferes with any of the setbacks, it will be removed.
Well, no, it doesn't. But I just thought if it was like, like a portable shed, I asked the question, why couldn't you move the shed to the other side, and then perhaps you'd get another four or five feet or 10 feet out of it?
I think it's, 10 feet is as close as we can get. Difference, we tried to get as close as we could to minimize the amount of frontage that we would have to be asking for. And 10 feet is as close as we can.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
I guess just, I realize I'm not sure that it would actually, it'd probably just create perhaps a less conforming request. But was there any consideration to try to do two driveways or a shared driveway or something onto New Hampshire Avenue, so that you didn't have the second, you know, the long driveway and the second driveway onto Broad Street? So, I don't know if that was ever discussed, and I'm not sure, you know, like I said, I think you would end up with a frontage issue for sure back there, but you're at least dealing with traffic that's not right on Broad Street. And I don't know if that gives you any better configuration for placement at three homes. So, it's just something that, kind of curious about if it ever came up, or if you're aware of it. Maybe there's...
You'd have to, the difference in the corner, and I think our engineer tried to meet all of the ordinances as close as he could possibly meet them. And trying to do something in here would probably have been more of a problem.
That's kind of what I expected. I just didn't know if you had any kind of direct awareness of that consideration.
I gotta give credit, did a good job meeting all of the requirements, except for that little 10-foot thing. And it's a pretty decent lot, because it gives a lot of open space. It's, this is a pretty good front yard for anybody that has small children that are dealing that, dealing that. And we have a front yard here, we have a good-sized backyard. So, it's, turns out to be a nice lot.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I think we're all set for now. You could have a seat. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed three-lot division at 266 Broad Street? Is there anyone with questions or concerns? I see a hand in the back. Hi, ma'am, if you'd like to come up and give us your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind?
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, my name is Jill Jason, and I live at 4 New Hampshire Ave.
How you doing, Ms. Jason?
I'm doing well, thanks. And my condolences, Estelle will be missed. She was a great neighbor. I just printed these maps off your website yesterday, and on one dated February 14th, Lot 460 dash 2, which is next to me, looks okay. I have no issues with that. And then on February 27th, it's moved, and it's only 10 feet from my house. So, I'm concerned as to which map is correct, and how close is this gonna be to my house? What are the setbacks? Or, I mean, I know what the frontage is, we just heard that, but what are the side, what are the rules on being close to the side?
Thank you, and we'll get your question answered right away. Just to clarify, I think your map, 138 Lot 159, are kind of the corner house?
Yes.
One with a lot of big pine trees?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah, they're scary.
I tell ya, it was a windy day when I went, and I was looking out the sunroof, making sure they weren't gonna come down. In your, your neighborhood is R9 zone. You want to jump into that, Mr.?
The front yard setback is 20 feet towards New Hampshire, which they meet. It's a 10, 10-foot setback on the side, excuse me, 30 feet in the rear. So, they do meet the setbacks of that lot.
So, the house was moved, the proposed house was moved. On this map, it looks great on the February 14th.
Well, I guess...
And then on February 27th, it's moved closer to me, and I'm just wondering which one is correct.
Sure. What's proposed before us tonight is the one with, with it closer to you, so to speak. In other words, it's meeting the 10-foot left-side yard setback. By my eyeball, it's probably 12 feet from your property line. So, just to speak a little more about that, in the R9 zone, you and all your neighbors, that, what you're looking at right there has a good view of it. If you look where it says "proposed dwelling," and you'll see a little dash line that has a 10-foot next to it, you're probably, maybe you're reading glasses to see that. It's kind of small. But, so that dash line is the minimum building setback. So, so you could say a developer, a builder could put the building anywhere within that dash line. Now, I'm just gonna make a guess that, that initially, the building happened to be further away, but because of the kind of unusual shape of the backyard, it's not, not parallel to Broad Street, but it kind of goes at an angle that, that the proposal was, it balances that piece of property next to you a little better, that the structure's closer to you. I'm guessing that's what it is, but Mr. Prunier will be coming back after you and can speak to that. So, what's before us tonight is what you see right there. Although that's, on another hand, that's not really set in stone, that could move because anybody by right could put it within that dash line.
Okay.
So, have, has your question been answered? Maybe you don't like the answer, but I think...
You are correct. I have two more issues.
Sure.
One is that there is no drainage on New Hampshire Ave. So, what impact is this gonna have on rainfall, snow removal? Right now, when it rains, we have Lake Havasu in front of our house because there is no drainage. So, what impact would this have? And then, I just had a third question. I'd just like to know, are these people going to be building these houses, or just getting the approvals and selling the lots, so that anyone that buys a lot already has permission to build?
I, I, I don't think any of us know the answer to question number three.
Okay.
But, Mr. Prunier, I think will be happy to answer that in just a moment. And I'm gonna take a stab at question number two, and that is, by law, the post-development runoff of any lot cannot exceed the pre-development runoff. So, in other words, if or when a house goes in there, you've now got a roof, you've got a driveway, you've got rain gutters, and an engineer that certifies that plot plan needs to also be certifying that the post-development runoff is not gonna exceed what's there now. So, for example, if there's kind of a slope, and it rains, and it runs right off, there's runoff there now, and they need to slow down what comes off the roof quicker, so that it's no faster. So, the, the civil engineer who designs the property and the grading of it is gonna be certifying that that's the case, and we certainly hope that that's the reality of it.
Okay.
So, but before you go, are there any questions?
I was just saying, the firm that's doing this is, is well experienced in dealing with infill lots, with drainage and stormwater runoff, and working with utilities. So, and I know as our staff has complete confidence that they'll be able to do it, you know, to meet, meet all of our codes.
Okay.
Ms., Mr. Shaw?
It's perhaps more of a comment, but also, the process is, this would still have to go to the planning board and go through their approvals, because this is a subdivision into the three lots. So, that's where some of those engineering details will be presented and gone through, and the planning board could, could provide guidance as far as some of the other particulars. So, and I think I actually might be able to even partially answer your question three a little bit, in that just, the, when we have, when we approve these kind of, if we approve something like this, there is a two-year window to act on it. As far as who executes it and how that happens, again, Attorney Prunier might be able to speak to that, but we're not necessarily deciding anything in that regard as to a timeline, or who will build, or if the lots would just get subdivided and sold to be developed. So, so some of that is, is what will get worked out through the rest of the process, so...
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Ms. Jason. Was there anybody else with questions or concerns? Nobody other than Ms. Jason. Mr. Prunier, would you like to speak to those questions for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In answer to your previous question, Mr. Currier, as to what that little thing on the side, it's a narrow porch. I'm told by butters that it's a narrow, narrow porch. Drainage is something that has to be addressed, as you indicated. You gave the statement correct, that the runoff can't be anymore. Usually, when there is a drainage problem, and the Department of Public Works is aware of it, they usually make the last person in work at taking care of the drainage a little bit more than what might have been taken care of. But that will all be, have to be addressed at the planning board. The present idea is to build the houses. However, if someone came by and said, "I'd like to build my dream house on that lot. Will you sell it to me?" Probably could be sold. But right now, the idea is to build the houses themselves. Thank you.
All right. Oh, wait, Mr. Shaw?
Just, can you comment any further on the proposed placement of the dwelling unit that will have the driveway on New Hampshire Avenue? Just 'cause there was, as noted, you know, in the, the original plan that we had did show it, you know, driveway was much closer to the corner of the street, and the house was more pushed towards the center or right-hand side of the lot, whereas now that this plot. So, I don't know, you know, also what...
What happened was that the, there were concept plans that were made. The first one was a concept plan. And when they asked me to go to get a variance, I said, "I don't like to use concept plans, because what happens is we may get a dimension later on that doesn't come up, and I don't want that to happen. I want to make sure." So, they had the property surveyed, and that's the last plan. That's why it came out that way. The engineer surveyed it and came up with their best thoughts as to where everything should be located.
Thank you for clarifying that. Ms. Jason, you have the right to come back, or are you okay with what you've heard? You don't, you could come back?
I'm okay, thank you.
So, I just wanted to say into the microphone that Ms. Jason is okay. So, with that, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting on 266 Broad Street. Any thoughts? Ms. McKay?
On this one, no. I'm pretty much a visual person here in these concepts. No, right now, I don't have an opinion one way or the other.
All right. Mr. Boucher?
I'm generally in favor. The sheer size of the property, obviously, you know, really what we're talking about is, you know, the, the entrance off of Broad Street, and, and how, you know, the code is written, as Mr. Prunier described, that was really done to take care of issues, you know, in cul-de-sacs. So, you know, again, looking at this, this property and listening to the testimony and, you know, looking at the property, again, again, we're, we have homes that are, that are on lots that, that meet the requirements, meet all the, you know, the setbacks from the house. Again, we're just really talking about the entrance off of Broad Street. So, again, I'm in favor. I don't really see any reason why I would be convinced, you know, or any issues there about why we wouldn't put a driveway there on that side of the property. I did think the exact same thing as Mr. Shaw was thinking about, was why couldn't they put two drivers there? But then, I'm thinking if I'm living on that corner piece of property, and I got cars that, like literally pile up to the front of my house, you know, it's almost like I'm being intruded on, you know? And again, you know, again, maybe that's again why the driveway got moved over, you know, from the original plan, and that's kind of my thought. It could be for other reasons, but, and then if there was a driveway there, it seemed to be a lot of activity in that corner, you know, for those homes. So, again, I go back to this. I understand, you know, trying to preserve that original house, which I think is a great idea on that lot. So, again, there is a big piece of property, and I, and I think, you know, again, we see, you know, we see flag lots, right? But, it's funny, this is kind of a flag lot, but it's really not a dramatic flag lot. It's, you know, we're, we're not that far off from it being just a straight shot back. So, I, so, and I could see where they couldn't really make that happen any other way, you know, without having to seek other variances for the existing home. So, again, I don't, I don't see anything that's, would give me pause to not consider this application in a favorable manner.
All right, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I guess a few thoughts. I mean, I probably would have explored this also with Attorney Prunier, if I'd thought of it earlier, but, and I, so, well, first, let me step back. So, it looks like the total existing lot is somewhere close to 35,000 square feet. So, this lot would almost support four homes, but it's not quite there. So, I think three, it's not pushing the density usage. Clearly, the existing house really does create a significant difficulty of how to carve things up in a way to support even, you know, three lots without getting into moving that house, or starting to have, you know, additional encroachment where it no longer is gonna be able to meet its setbacks, or that kind of thing. The only thing that possibly could have been done, but I think this is where we would get into the kind of extreme implementation that doesn't really serve any real good purpose, is the front of that, this proposed Lot 460 dash 1, could probably have been widened up in that first 25 feet, or whatever it is, 30 feet, 20 feet, maybe call it 25 feet, you know, kind of forced like a jog out. So, it could have met the frontage and width requirement there, and jog right back in. So, you'd have this, it would almost be like a C-shaped lot. So, I think there was a way that they probably could meet it, but it wouldn't, it gets the point of it, it becomes almost absurd, or it's one of those things, it meets the technical letter of the law. And I guess if we were to not approve this, maybe I'd... And I guess if we were to not approve this, maybe I'd have given them a thought for how they could go about that. But I wouldn't want to push, you know, I don't see a reason to push them to that kind of thing because to me, that, that's not a helpful way of implementing the code either. So, I mean, I don't necessarily, I'm not really fond of or a big fan of seeing a really long driveway, a lot of pavement there, and the extra driveway onto Broad Street. But this property, actually, if they did want to raise the existing home and build, they could put two homes with the sufficient frontage on Broad Street, and they could have two driveways in it. We wouldn't be any different as far as the kind of impact. So, I, I think in the end, the implementation of the restriction of the lot frontage and the lot width is the only reason not to be able to support that 460-1. Does not seem to rise to the merits of holding to the code versus implementing this plan. And then, so, I guess I'm basically saying I'm generally favorable. My one kind of just request for the applicant, I'd still, especially for the benefit of Ms. Jason, if for New Hampshire, would be whatever could be done in a final proposal to push that new lot, new home at 460-2 to more of the center of the lot, or in other words, less to up against the 10-foot encroachment, I think would be a better overall implementation and less impactful to the neighborhood. So, I guess unless, unless the board felt that we would want to compel or force by a stipulation requiring that, my concern is seeing the building box envelope and what they're already working with. It's fairly, fairly narrow, and I want to be careful that we're not imposing something too restrictive. And, you know, there might be other reasons as the site plan gets developed and as the planning board goes through this that would lead to something different. So, again, I'll put it out there, at least at the moment, as just a guidance or request for consideration in that regard. But, it's my thoughts.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
The neighborhood's very nice. I drove down there. New Hampshire Avenue is a quiet, no outlet street. It says dead end, but no outlet is the new term for that. I'm not usually a fan of, well, I am not a fan of flag lots. I see too many of them, but as Mr. Shaw said, given, and Mr. Boucher said, given what's there, this is actually a very good plan to construct three houses there. I don't think it would be out of character for the neighborhood. Regarding moving the 462 house, I'm noticing that the corner of the proposed dwelling is right up against the setback line, the 30-foot rear setback line. I don't know how, how much that could be moved without actually causing the house to be smaller. So, I'm generally in favor of this as proposed. We did comment earlier about the screening fence, and I don't know whether we want to put that in as a special condition.
Okay, I'll jump in, and I, first, on the screening fence, I think, especially because the applicant spoke to it and the butter on the easterly side requested it, I, I would think we'd want to have a screening fence on the easterly side of the property as a stipulation, and that leaves the flexibility to design the fence as they jointly agree. I mean, I'm generally, I'm in favor of this application. I think my thoughts have been spoken before. I'm with you on, you know, the only challenge here is the additional driveway on Broad Street, and I spent some time in that little corner there on New Hampshire Avenue, but I see it as you do. It's like if there were two driveways there, it really, it really ruins the, you know, the one property. I was thinking, geez, it would be, couldn't a shared driveway come right down the middle? Leaves a lot more grass space, but I don't think it's for this board to stipulate that. That could actually be something requested, discussed, or perhaps required by the planning board. But, you know, if this were approved by our board, it doesn't mean that the planning board doesn't have the ability to do that if they see fit. I guess to your point, Mr. Shaw, about the stipulation of moving the house, I felt, I feel that's a bit too strong. I think Ms. Jason, you know, has a valid point in not wanting it as close. I think a discussion with the owners or future owners or discussion at the planning board, I think it would, it's more in their purview if they wanted to require that, if, if the developer, whoever that may be, didn't want to just do that on his own from discussion with the existing butter. So, I'm a little uncomfortable to make it a stipulation, but I, I think it's a, you know, a reasonable request to try to shift that to the right. It's also a pretty big footprint, you know, the house doesn't, you know, I think that's probably a maximized footprint of 50 by 30. If the house were a little smaller, it could easily give more room on the left side. So, I think we have, Mr. Shaw?
I have a few other thoughts.
Go right, jump right in, yeah.
So, I mean, the, so the building kind of envelope, it would allow for that house to be pulled closer to the street and pushed to the right. So, even though that back corner is up against it on this block, there are ways to manipulate that. I think I would like to see us go ahead and just add the, an additional stipulation to a fence, a screening fence on the westerly side of the property, at least bordering for New Hampshire, essentially what's up against lot 460-2. I think, even though we didn't talk about it, I think as a, kind of as a benefit, similar to those properties on Bailey Street that back up from the easterly side, I think that would be a minimally reasonable kind of additional thing to intervene to help basically, I think, alleviate some of the potential stress or imposition of if this house does push up against the setback on that side. So, sorry, I feel like, I think I had one other thought, but I think I might have lost it in there, so.
All right. Ms. McKay?
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, for putting in two words some of my jumbled thoughts. The neighbor, I think it bothers me that it's so close to Mrs. Jay, yes, Mrs. Jason. For myself, I wouldn't want that kind of closeness. I like your thoughts around that. Guess it would have to defer to Attorney Prunier and the people that do this, but I guess I would hope that the comments are listened to and that the butters' concerns are taken into consideration.
Mr. Shaw?
So, I did, I did recall the other thought I had. So, so the other potentially affected property is 23 New Hampshire, which is the one that's on the corner there, map 138, lot 34. The thing I was thinking about in terms of the whole idea, if there was a shared driveway or two driveways onto New Hampshire Ave, it would pretty much make a home that's there at 460-1 facing more towards New Hampshire Ave, more towards the side yard of number 23, New Hampshire. And I think that kind of implementation would actually be more imposing, more burdensome, I think, even regardless of like, you know, we already kind of talked about the kind of having even a shared driver, kind of having something that jogs around and all. I just think that, and this is probably where the engineering that was already done, whatever consideration might have been there, probably kind of already thought through this stuff, so we're just kind of doing it real time or live. So, I guess in the end, I'm, I'm seeing less and less reason to suggest any sort of second access, second frontage, or second kind of placement that would really be accessing New Hampshire Ave. And I think something more like what is in front of us makes more sense.
I agree. I think, I think we're all favorable to this. Could I ask you, Mr. Shaw?
Sure.
You know, because I, I'm in agreement with those screening fences on the sides as well.
All right. I will make a motion on behalf of owner, estate of Estelle Vertume. Applicant is LaFever Folio LLC. Address is 266 Broad Street. The description is for two different variances. Minimum lot frontage, where 60 feet is required and 50 feet is proposed, and minimum lot width, where 75 feet is required and 50 feet is proposed, to subdivide one lot into three lots. So, this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. We've noted many things about the unique circumstances surrounding this property. I'll start off with the fact that the, the existing square footage is something approximating 35,000 square feet. These lots in the, in this R9 zone, which this is in, only require 9,000 square feet. So, it would be possible to put almost four homes into this space. That would still obviously require an area variance. So, this is, would be utilizing the existing allowance for density. Another key factor in this is that the existing dwelling, that the intent is to preserve that structure, is placed in such a way that it impedes the ability to have the second frontage and access from Broad Street such that it requires these variances to be issued. As noted in earlier discussion, it might be possible by, instead of doing this kind of slight flag lot type of shape, to have considered some sort of a C-type of configuration where there would have been a, an encroachment further onto the existing lot 460 to satisfy these requirements, but not necessarily provided any real benefit for the existing or proposed new structure. We did also note that there were other considerations and options regarding the placement of the other two proposed dwellings and access to and from New Hampshire Avenue. And I think the general consensus with the board is that the proposal to have the two, the two units, two lots having access to Broad Street, I know we didn't note it, but the proposal on the driveways also even shows turnaround, so that certainly helps prevent any sort of backing out onto Broad Street from either of those properties. Proposed dwelling at the proposed 460-2 lot, right now, on the con, on the proposed plan does show it to be fairly close to the property line, but still meeting the 10-foot required side yard setback on the left side. So, there, there's already by testimony willingness on the applicant's part to provide a screening fence on the easterly side, and I'll speak to stipulations regarding screening fence. But I think overall, this is a reasonable use. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indication that there'll be any adverse effect on surrounding property values. It's not contrary to public interest. Substantial justice will be served. I'll note the added stipulations of a screening fence to be placed on the full easterly side, which is basically the budding properties on Bailey Street, and also, which was already noted in testimony, but will also add the addition of a screening fence between the, on the westerly side of the property, budding the number four, New Hampshire Avenue, which would be almost the full extent of that westerly part of the proposed lot 460-2. I think that's everything that I wanted to note, and other than, again, that this is an approval, that I'm making the motion for approval of this plan.
Motion on the table. Second to the motion. I'll second that. Any discussion on the motion?
Just, just so it's part of this part of the record, even though we discussed it, I would just, again, like to note that the at least preference to try to place the proposed dwelling at lot 462-2 as much towards the center or towards even the right side of the property. Again, I didn't want to note that as a stipulation or in the actual motion, but I think it's worth noting in our discussion.
Yeah, I think I agree, and I think we, five of us, agree that the preference would be to not have that unit on the left, or to not push it to the left or move it to the right as much as reasonable. Mr. Boucher?
Also, obviously, we would encourage that any of the butters should go to the planning board meetings when this comes up, because this is really where they're going to be heard the most about that placement of that, that home. Or any stipulations around that.
All right. Motion on the table. Show of hands in favor of the motion of approval. That's five. So, on Mr. Prunier, it's approved. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number six. Are we good to keep going? All right, I'd like to open. Oh, thank you. All right. Like to open the public hearing on case number seven. The, the address is 30 and Land at Nagel Street. The owner is the estate of Nadine Trask. The applicant is Sequel Development and Management. The request is for the following variances. Number one, minimum lot area, 4,500 square feet is existing, 6,000 square feet is required. Number two, the lot width, 50 feet is existing, 60 feet is required. Number three, number three is to maintain and keep the garage that would encroach seven feet into the seven-foot required left side yard setback. And number four, I want to get this all out on the record, the minimum, this would be for the land. So, those variances I just spoke of were for the existing lot at 30 Nagel Street. The undeveloped lot to the left of it, or as what's identified as land on Nagel Street. The requi, the requests there are for minimum lot area, the same 4,500 square feet is existing, 6,000 is required. The lot width, analogously, 50 feet is existing, 60 feet is required, and all of this is to construct a new house on the land at 30, or what I think would become 32 Nagel Street. Hi, good evening. If you'd like to walk us through your application?
Hi, good evening. My name is Peter Doloff. I'm the president of Sequel Development and Management, Inc. We're located at 2 Knightsbridge Drive in Nashua, New Hampshire. Just to elaborate a little on the description that the chairman gave, and thank you, by the way, for hearing our case tonight. We are in the process of purchasing the home at 30 Nagel Street. The home at 30 Nagel Street is really a very nice home. It's been remodeled recently in the last few years, and the previous owners, current owners have done a really good job by improving the property and making it a modern, nice home. We're essentially talking about two lots that would, by today's standards, are non-conforming lots. It appears that the two lots have always been owned by the same party that's owned 30 Nagel Street since their inception, conceptually. So, we're looking to separate those lots so they're not owned by the same person going forward. We expect a lot of time looking at the character of the neighborhood and trying to figure out the best use for this property. The zoning would allow us to put a duplex on this property, you know, without coming before you folks, we could just go right to construction on that. But the majority of the homes in this neighborhood are single-family homes, and they're all built on 4,500 to 5,000, 5,200 square foot lots, which was pretty standard at that time period. The previous owner or the owner at the time of inception obviously owned both lots, so they weren't worried about setbacks, or the setbacks at that time period were much different than they are today. So, essentially, we're looking to, again, separate the ownership of these two lots. They are both lots on the zoning records and the tax records. And the home we would build that what would become 32 Nagel Street would fall within all of today's current setbacks. So, we would meet the seven-foot sideback setbacks on the side, the 20-foot on the back, and I believe it's 10 feet on the front. We've picked out a nice little home that'll meet all those setbacks nicely. So, just to run through my application, the vacant lot of 32 Nagel Street would be used for the construction of a single-family home, approximately 1,500 square feet. It will sit back within all the required. It will sit back within all the required setbacks of today's current zoning. The other thing we did do too, in talking about the garage at thirty Nagel Street and how close it comes to the property line, we looked at Dexter Street, Nagel Street, and Hunt Street. And again, in those, at that time period, the setbacks were much different. What I've done is highlighted all of the properties that have structures that fall within the setback, and we very quickly, we're able to find ten of them on those three streets. So again, staying with the character of the neighborhood, it's not unusual to have part of a structure in a setback in that particular neighborhood, and it's just because of the way it developed over time. The other thing we did is we, as we were looking at the highest and best use of the property, again, we could go the duplex route and even sell it as condexes on each side. But when we did the appraisal on the new fifteen hundred square foot home on thirty-two Nagel Street, the appraisal came back at about three fifteen, three twenty. That's really on the very high end for that neighborhood. So by us building a single-family home, we're gonna bring the values of the homes around us and the homes that have been improved up versus a two-family home, which would, at best hold at level, may actually bring the values down. So again, the best, highest and best use for this particular lot is to put a single-family home, and then again, that falls within the character of that particular neighborhood. Item two, I just essentially addressed the other homes in the neighborhoods with structures within setbacks. Number three, I've addressed the highest and best use. Number four, I've addressed the values and bringing the values up. And then number five, obviously, the owner of the home at thirty Nagel Street, when he built the garage, the garage doesn't appear to be part of the original structure, he owned both lots, so he wasn't concerned with the setbacks at that time, so he obviously built what would be today's setback. So in essence, that's my case. Again, we'd like to build a nice, single-family home in thirty-two Nagel Street. It will meet all of today's zoning requirements. We would obviously do some things to buffer it from both neighbors to increase the value of that home for ourselves when we do sell it. That would, you know, and again, it falls into the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, Mr., questions for Mr. Doloff? Mr. Boucher?
I just wanna revisit the comments you made about the alternatives. So you mentioned two things. The alternative would be to put a duplex, you could put a duplex. The alternative, you mentioned condex, or something like that. So explain how that would be done on this lot, if that was as an option?
Well, a duplex is a two-family home, and then the type of ownership, a condex would be two different people could own each side, or it could remain a duplex where you have one owner that owns the entire building. So talking about forms of ownership as opposed to former structure, but a two-family home is what could be done there.
So would the thought be to raise what's there now, or would that be to just add on?
No, the home that's there now is too nice to raise. You've got the garage on the left side, so you could put another garage attached to that garage, and then a home on the other side of that. So you'd have two garages in the middle, a home on either side, which is a very popular two-family design in the construction world today.
And are you saying that you could do right now if you wanted to?
Yeah, yeah, you wouldn't meet all the current criteria and...
Right, okay. So that's really what I was getting to the point was, is that you're saying that you would not need any variances to do that at this point, it would just be a planning board approval?
Correct. As much as we enjoy visiting you folks, we wouldn't have to do that.
All right, thank you.
Hold on, are there any other questions for Mr. Doloff?
Well, it's more just a, it's more just kind of a procedural understanding, so Mr. Falk might be the best one to answer this, but, so would they, to pursue the duplex-type option, would they need to merge the two lots into one? Is that what would have to happen for that, to actually be allowed?
Yes, it would have to, that lot line would have to disappear. Also, in the RB zone, which is the district that this property is in, if you look at the density table, there are seven dwelling units per acre allowed in that zone. So if you divide seven into forty-three thousand, five sixty, it would be six thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-two square feet per unit times two, so they'd really need twelve thousand, four-hundred-and-forty-five square feet for a two-family. They would need, they would still need a variance for the land area.
Well, your wish would be granted, you come back before. You get to pay another fee.
The code used to be different, it used to require like nine thousand, but it's changed.
Mr. Lino?
You had talked about doing some sort of buffer between this new home and the existing home at thirty Nagel, but the garage is right on the property line, so what kind of a buffer could you put in? You already have a small, non-conforming lot.
Well, the home at thirty Nagel Street has a white vinyl fence around it, so our plan is to actually reconfigure that white vinyl fence and run it right down the property line between thirty and thirty-two Nagel Street, so that there is a buffer between those two properties. The property of thirty-four already has a wood stockade fence, so that side of the property would likely be buffered with additional landscaping, shrubs and things like that. But we could run a white vinyl fence right down the middle of thirty and thirty-two to separate that, further separate it.
Okay. Any other questions? I had a question. I guess it's just my thought, you know, I don't live in this neighborhood, but I sightwalk everything, and so all my trips downtown the last two weeks, I go down Nagel Street and try to hit a feel for the neighborhood, and it seemed to me, seems to me, present tense, that, and I didn't look until this application arrived, which I think showed up Friday in my mailbox, it just seems to me that the thirty, thirty-two is tighter density than those right around it, just looking across the street in the abutters. And I certainly hear your argument loud and clear, your point number two, that there are, you know, setback incursions sporadically, somewhat consistently around the neighborhood. But it just, it seems to me that this is a bit tighter density than what's right here adjacent around it. And as I look at this map, I, you know, I feel, I feel validated by that, because the widths of these are much smaller than what's immediately left, right, and across the street. And I didn't know if you agree or disagree with me on that.
I don't disagree. The placement on the house on thirty Nagel Street is a little bit to the left of center, and then they added the garage, so they're right against the property line. I mean, one of our fallback discussions where we could remove that garage and put thirty Nagel Street fully back into compliance with the setbacks, and that would probably do away with some of that illusion of crampedness there.
Mm-hmm.
It devalues the house at thirty Nagel Street a little bit, and obviously, a single-car garage is something that's highly sought after. But I don't disagree with what you're saying, the placement of the house on thirty Nagel, and the garage afterwards does make it seem very tight. And there are some other double-lot homes where they, in those three streets, and they put the home right in the middle of the two lots, so that makes those homes seem like they have a lot more room around them, which they do, they have larger lots.
Yeah. All right, I guess, are there any other questions from, I think we're all set for now?
Okay.
Have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor of this proposal at thirty Nagel Street? Anybody else in favor? Questions, concerns, or opposition? Is there anybody with questions, concerns? Hi, if you'd like to come to the microphone, we also received a letter here from Mr. Claude Lejer. Is he here tonight?
Yes.
Is that you? Oh, okay. Well, I just, I don't think any of us read it, because I see it's dated March twenty-seventh, and I got here at six twenty-nine PM, so maybe you could walk us through this letter and let us know what's on your mind.
My concern is, first of all, is our privacy.
Okay, I'm sorry, what's your, oh, you're thirty-four?
Yes, my name is Claude Lejer, the owner of thirty-four Nagel Street.
Okay.
I've been there since the end of eighty-eight.
Uh-huh.
Invested a lot of money in the home, and are proud of our home. And we feel that the distance between the two homes at thirty Nagel Street and our home is not really sufficient to go cram a house in between without affecting the value of our property and also our privacy. We have a bedroom on the side where we figured that their driveway would probably be installed, and our bedroom window is right on that side, and our house is very close to the line. And we're very concerned about privacy and also the property values, if ever we wanted to sell our home, that we don't have anybody to protect the value of our home. And like I said, we've made a lot of changes in that home since we've been there, and we kind of value our privacy. And I also, I don't know if you saw the, I circulated a petition, I got fourteen signatures of people that opposed, and those are not all the people that I actually, I only went to the people that were direct abutters or people that I knew in the neighborhood on our street. And I didn't actually go to every door, but I know if I would have gone to every door, I don't think there'd be anybody that'd be for having a house squeezed in between thirty Nagel Street and thirty, and our home. We just, we would just, we'd just like to keep, I spoke to a person down the street who had the same thing happen to them, there was a small lot there, and they stressed to me that they, they've lost their privacy, and, you know, they come out of their home and the people have their windows, their shades aren't closed, and they sometimes, you know, it invaded their privacy, and they're very, they're not happy about it at all. And I'm just hoping that you come up with a good decision not to take away our privacy.
All right, thank you. And also, just to clarify, in the letter we received as Mr. Lejer, am I pronouncing that correctly?
Lejer, yes.
Lejer.
Everybody wants to put a D in there, but...
Lejer, says there's fourteen signatures, and I would just say they're all Nagels, some Dexter, one Dexter, mostly Nagel Street.
Yes, the ones that directly are budding behind thirty Nagel Street.
Okay, and so we have that here as part of the package. Question for you, Mr. Lejer, from Mr. Boucher?
Yes, sir. Couple of things, and I'm just trying to gauge where you're at, because you're the most impacted. Couple of things, they all kind of relate. If there was a standard six-foot-high fence, would that help appease some of the privacy issues that you have?
Not really.
Okay.
I mean, now we have a fence that's lower, that kind of tapers down off to the side.
Right, I'm just trying to get a feel. And again, I don't know what the applicant's proposal, but let's just say, again, that the structure that would be built there would have none or minimal amount of windows on that side, so then, again, you're gaining privacy. Would that help you?
Well, it's mainly, it's mainly the fact of squeezing a house in a small lot. I mean, there's many variances that are needed here, and you're really squeezing a home and, you know. And also, a driveway that would be close to our property, where our bedroom window is right there. You know, I know the driveway, I'm sure they plan on putting a driveway the opposite side of thirty Nagel Street, I'm sure it would be close to our property.
Well, again, I don't know what the planning board would say, but again, you know, we could stipulate that the driveway be adjacent to the next driveway, I think. But let's just say we could do that, that the driveway would be, so the driveway would be adjacent to the other property, so then that would keep those two properties with, you know, it keeps the privacy away from the other ends of the houses. But let's just say we could move the, we could stipulate the driveway be next to the other driver that exists, right? We have minimal, or I don't know how we would do, but the minimal, any, anything on that side of the home. And with that, if the house, if the lot was bigger, and then you've heard us talk in previous cases about there's an envelope, right? We have side setbacks, rear setbacks. If they met the side setback on that side, right, and the lot was of size, they could put a house there without coming to see us, right? So I'm just trying to get your perspective on it, and of course, we know that the lot is smaller than what's currently allowed. I'm just trying to get a feel for you for, and I'm not saying we're gonna approve or where I'm going, I'm just trying to get a feel for, because you're the most impacted, what would help you, or what would help you in this process? So I know that you don't want the house there, it's very clear.
Yeah, that's, I'm agreeing.
But what I'm saying is that, if the lot was bigger, right, they could still stick a house there, right? If they meet the side setback, they could still put a house there, and they wouldn't be here. But let's just say that the house goes in and they meet the side setback, right? But you have these other issues. I'm just trying to see if, depending on how this goes, whatever way, there could be a conversation about what we can do to appease the person or the abutter that's most affected, right? So one of, some of those things are, you know, privacy fence, talking to or making some stipulation about the number of windows facing your property, it could be about having the driveway on the opposite side so that it's not affecting, you know, that you. So this is where I'm kind of going with that, and I'm just, again, I'm asking you, you, again, I know...
I don't think squeezing a small house in, on a small lot like that is gonna make my value, my property, is gonna protect the value of my property, just because it's a new property, new construction. I don't think, if it's a small, squeezed-in piece of property on a small lot, and I'm not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for the other residents that are opposed also, you know, it's invading their, they look out their window and they, you know, it's nice to see a little bit of grass, you know? Not build everything, not cover everything completely, that if, you know, residents pay their taxes there, and they should be able to, you know, you buy a home there, when you initially buy your home, you expect to have the room that you purchased, but now if someone comes in and your privacy is invaded, and you've spent lots of money all those years in your property and have pride in your property and have taken care of your property, you know, so well all these years, taking good care of your property, keep it, keep it up nice, you know? And if my privacy's invaded there, I mean, we'll probably end up moving away from there, because, you know, that's, when we first bought the property, you had a nice piece of land, and you had, you weren't, you weren't, nobody was on top of you, but if, I mean, I, we just don't want, and the people don't want a building there, you know? You know, all the people that signed that petition, they don't want the building there. It doesn't matter what you do for me, it doesn't, these people don't want it there, you know? And I'm pleading that you don't let this go through, you know, because it happened down the street, and I see what they're going through, you know? And I've got a lot of money invested there, and my daughter's gonna have a baby, is gonna deliver a baby in a month from now, and she's concerned about the noise that's gonna go on for months, you know, for construction there, you know? So I plead with you to, you know, I pay my taxes, you know, we pay a lot of taxes there, and for me, to have my way of life diminished because someone wants to make a quick buck and move on, well, how about the people that live there that have been there for many years? You know, it's not fair to them, you know? That's all I have to say.
Mr. Shaw actually has a question, I think, for you.
So I can't tell from the drawings, but, and I don't know if you know exact anyhow, but do you, but I'll ask, do you know how close your property is to your lot line? Because it looks like it might be under the...
It's about whatever the minimum is, I'm...
Minimum is seven right now, it looks like it...
I don't think it's more than seven feet.
Yeah, it looked like it could be less, but I don't know if you...
Yes. It's probably as the minimum, whatever the minimum, because it's really tossed to that side.
Yeah. This picture shows it. Yeah. It's close, yeah.
I mean, we love, we love the, we love the street, and we love, we've been there for many years, and we hope that we can stay there, you know? But we, if we have someone on top of us, and, you know, the other people, the same thing, they have their rights too, you know? They're not here tonight, but they, they've signed the petition because they didn't want it to happen, you know?
All right. Any other questions? All right, thanks for coming tonight, have a seat. Was there anybody else who wants to speak in opposition? All right, there's no other, Mr. Doloff, would you like to come back and address the concerns you've heard here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We understand Mr. Lejer's concerns, and I appreciate Mr. Boucher's questions, they were very good questions. The house we've chosen to build is, has a right-loaded garage, so it's always been our intention to move garage to garage. So the house, we can push it as close to the right setback line as possible, we can put it right on this right setback line, and so it's garage to garage, much like you would do the duplex. So that, and then we can, the house we're looking to build is thirty-two feet wide, we have a thirty-six-foot building envelope, and so we can push it all the way to the right-hand side of the building envelope to give him, to give nine or ten feet to the property line, and then as Mr. Lejer said, his house looks like it's just under seven feet, so he's probably a little bit in the setback. But if we maximize the movement to the right, and then we can put some trees in there, and then with his setback as well, you know, he's gonna be twenty-plus feet, or close to twenty feet from home to home, and then the traffic would again be to the middle of thirty and thirty-two, so we'd be able to mitigate and protect as much of his privacy as possible. Much, again, the same way we would design the duplex with both garages coming up the middle. So, I mean, we do understand his concerns, we do understand that it's not an enormous lot, but we've tried to find a home that... but we've tried to find a home that fits the character of that neighborhood, matches the sizes of the homes that are there, and then we'll increase the value of the property. I think I addressed most of his questions.
All right. Any follow-up questions for Mr. Dolph? Mr. Shaw?
So does that does that home have windows on the left side of it by the plan right now?
Um, left side of it has a staircase and it does have two living room windows, but they're more to the back of the home. And the other thing we can do is we can push the home back a little bit to offset it from his, creating a little bigger front yard, a little smaller backyard for our home, but it would offset it a little bit from his. But there does appear to be two windows on that side.
And it's a two-story home?
It's a two-story structure, correct. I suppose if push came to shove, we could maybe remove one living room window from that side. So then you'd only have one window to the back of the home. That's another possibility.
Okay.
And there would be room there to do, much as the picture shows, there would be room to do a couple of trees on that side and help mitigate with some landscaping.
All right, thank you.
And this is not a situation that we're going to put the lot on the market. We're going to, we will build the home. There's no question about that.
Any other questions for Mr. Dolph? All right, could have a seat.
Thank you.
Mr. Ledger, would you like to come back or did you have anything to follow up or rest as is? Okay, so Mr. Ledger's, you know, feels he's presented his case and rested in our hands. And with that, close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Anybody want to kick it off? Mr. Lionel?
I I first have a question, a process question. Are the, why are the variances for thirty Nagel required? I mean, I know that they don't meet the current setbacks, but it's an existing home that was built long ago. Is this necessary in order to split the the ownership or how does that work?
Well, right now, there's, you know, the two lots have always been owned by the same entity, the same family, going back, you know, through the years. And our code states that if you transfer ownership of a contiguous lot, you can only do so to meet the ordinance. And by doing this, right now, there's one house on about a nine-thousand-square-foot lot. By selling off one of the lots, there's going to be one lot, one house on a forty-five-hundred-square-foot lot, which the code requires six thousand square feet. That lot, non-conforming. And they're also creating a new buildable lot. Well, they would want it to be a buildable lot. They would also be non-conforming as far as the size as well.
So my, you answered my question, which is, is that the transfer of.
It's a transfer of ownership.
Transfer of ownership triggers the requirement. Okay. I do not support this proposal. I think that the L, the undeveloped lot is too small, much too small, to construct a house that's in character, keeping with the character of the neighborhood. It's only three-quarters the required size. There are certainly a large number of neighbors who have specified objections. If that lot was left undeveloped, then the issue of the setbacks of the garage and all of that, that wouldn't be an issue because it's as if it was part of the existing thirty Nagel Street lot. So I cannot support this proposal.
All right, Mr. Shaw?
I'm kind of where Mr. Lionel is, but I still have some further concerns about the procedural part of this. And I guess, because, and I'm a little bit unclear in this whole thing of, because it seems that we've, even the way the city had sometimes, you know, kind of documented ownership where there were technically, you know, multiple lots, but all owned by the same ownership. So I guess the concern I've got is if we don't approve the variances, just the ones only about the area, and I guess it would be the width as well, then that seems that we are continuing to force the same ownership of the two lots by the same owner. If the current ownership is supposed to be able to sell and handle those two lots in separate actions, then we would be preventing their ability to use their property in that, even just in the sense of how it's owned. And the other concern I have is that if we if we're doing that, we are basically allowing what's being treated and existing for all essential purposes, a conforming nine-thousand-square-foot lot into two separate non-conforming lots. And even if we don't approve anything else with these variances, I think we might get caught up in the the other state RSAs to do with having then a lot that would exist in separate ownership that nobody could build a house on without granting them some additional variances because it wouldn't meet the area requirement. So I feel like it's kind of a twisted, kind of almost Mobius strip kind of relationship of of things going on here. But to me, a lot of it kind of comes back to what we must do or shouldn't do or allowed to do regarding kind of the ownership question in the two separate lots, even though they've been handled as one existing lot. So I'd like some help in trying to think through that. And I don't know if Mr. Falk can help explain it a little bit further because it's definitely beyond me at the moment.
Well, you know, what you're what you're saying is is true. It does hamper certain property owners from selling off one of their lots. But especially in the, a lot of the older neighborhoods of the city, when they were platted way back a hundred or so years ago, a lot of these lots were even smaller. They were twenty-five-foot strips or forty-foot strips. And people would buy like a a group of two of them or three of them. And some of these, the language and the deeds have changed a lot over the years. I'm not sure how it was back in this neighborhood way back in the nineteen twenties or so, but. And that has come into play many, many times with us. We see a lot of lots that are even bigger and they want to sell off one of them to not have the common ownership, that they may not need like five variances like this one. This one needs a little bit more. Sometimes they only may need one or two variances and the request doesn't appear to be as, you know, aggressive or great. This one happens to be a lot more because the overall lot size is only nine-thousand square feet. The minimum lot size for a single-family home is six thousand. So this, the lot, you know, unfortunately for the for the applicant, it's not that big to begin with. So, but there's also, the RSAs, it used to be that assessing departments and zoning departments would all would combine lots together for zoning purposes or for tax purposes to meet, to make one conforming lot, even though there may be two deeds. But our department, even the board, we don't really get involved with tax issues and assessed issues and financial issues like that. So there was a revision to the RSAs that said that zoning and assessing departments or similar departments can't necessarily combine these lots involuntarily without the owner's permission. However, that doesn't stop them from coming to the board. They would still have to meet the code as far as lot sizes and other dimensional matters. It just doesn't absolve them from doing whatever they want without ever coming to the board, like in a case like this. We couldn't have approved this administratively. You know, we could, we couldn't have said that, okay, we got these two lots, go ahead and sell one of them off and just build a house there. Because, you know, we would be going from, well, what we would still consider one conforming lot, there would be two non-conforming lots left at the end.
Kind of like that selling off of one lot would be an act of putting everything into non-conformance. And so by law, they need to have the variances acquired to deal with those two lots to basically essentially split them up into different purposes.
Right. And the RSAs state that, you know, you know, they understand that assessing departments and tax departments and zoning departments do involuntarily merge these lots to make it a conforming lot. But we really can't do that anymore. However, there is that hammer that says, okay, they can't just go from this this one lot to two non-conforming lots where two lots don't meet the area, the width, the frontage setbacks, things like that. So we still have to kind of enforce it in a way. Otherwise, we will be letting everybody that has a larger lot than what the code zoning district allows to just sell off parts of their property because they have two different deeds. You just can't do that. You'd be creating non-conformities in a lot of places, especially in the inner city, the older part of the city.
So I guess that I was feeling like perhaps we were being kind of forced into a almost must act.
Taking land.
Yeah, taking the land, all those kind of things. So I guess I feel more comfortable in kind of having some context.
Well, like a like a taking, I think you started to say that word. A taking is really a pretty strong action. You know, that's when someone has really no reasonable economic or other use of a of a piece of land at all for anything. But, you know, the courts would probably argue in this case that it's a nine-thousand-square-foot lot with a single-family house on it in a zone that allows a single-family house and the lot's, you know, three-thousand square feet larger than what the minimum size is. So I would think the court, and I'm not an attorney, but I think the courts would argue that the, there's already reasonable use here. So the taking issue probably would not be supported either by our attorneys or.
Right. My concern was by taking action to split this up, that then there would be a taking type of issue set up and then we'd be forced to actually support that with the with the variances, et cetera. So that was kind of like, I kind of see in the series of steps that felt like we might not have a lot of choice. So so I guess all that background, I I really, I mean, I know this developer. We've seen already good work from them. I'm sure that anything they'd put in here would be, you know, would be very, very well-built and very well-done. But I think unfortunately also looking at things that, you know, even if this was perhaps over on, I think it was on like Hunt Street, there's a lot more of these much narrower lots there. But especially, I think Mr. Curry already noted that especially in the area right around number thirty and thirty-two, most of these lots look like they are the, you know, the the doubles or some multiples of the original very small lots. And so I do think that, you know, that is an issue. I think there is just the inherent placement of number thirty-four where if it was flipped or if it was more centered to that lot, Mr. Ledger wouldn't have as much, you know, direct impact. I appreciate that his point was not, you know, he's going to be very majorly affected if this were to go forward. And I know part of his argument was it's not just him. His neighbors and many of the others on the street view this as not a a good or welcome kind of, you know, squeezing of of buildings onto existing space. So I guess in the end, after again getting past some of those other concerns, I just do feel like this is is way too much relief being needed to place a second home. I would have been more compelled if if the original kind of thought that a duplex could go in, you know, as is, then that that kind of does weigh towards something like supporting two single-family homes instead. But now knowing that that, you know, also doesn't really go go forward without some relief, I just see this as as being too too imposing on the neighborhood and and too much relief to to achieve what is is being proposed.
Mr. Boucher?
I'm still stuck on the process. The, you know, this is two lots, these are two separate lots, correct, Mr. Falk?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, and again, you know, it's stated that this was done, this was what it was before, covered zoning, right? So many, many years ago, there could have been something done there, right? Possibly, right? But but it's not the case now. So I'm still stuck on that because I know it's, maybe it doesn't rise to a taking, but again, I'm not comfortable with feeling like, you know, we're we're not missing something or I'm not missing something. So, but I don't, yeah, I don't, that's as far as I can get on this.
All right. Ms. McKay?
Okay, well, while I appreciate what is trying to be done, I think the project is ambitious at best. I think the lot size is way too small. It doesn't seem like there will be enough land on either side of the house, maybe even in back. I don't know, nine thousand for two, forty-five hundred for each. That's fifteen hundred under what's supposed to happen for each. It just doesn't seem logical in my mind. And even if I was to discount Mr. Ledger's comments completely, the fourteen signatures of people that are going up and down the street speak volumes as to what's going on. And then as to your comment about the size of the lots around this particular property, it's just too disproportionate. And that's my dilemma. While I don't want to inhibit an owner from doing whatever they want to do with their property because it is their right, it is their land. I don't want to see an entire neighborhood impacted and have everybody's property devalued for that simple reason. And so I honestly and in good conscience cannot support this.
Thank you. Ms. McKay? My thoughts are, when I went to site walk this the first time, I was expecting to see what we see a lot of on the, kind of the infill developments up off of Wald Street, where you have an entire street of identical-sized lots. And there's like the double lot, you know, that, and it's undersized. You know, because they're all cut up the same width and they're all ten or twenty feet undersized. And the proposal is a home that's completely identical to every other home on the street and it needs variances. And by and large, as this board grants it, and a lot of times the abudders don't want it because they they like the lawn that's gotten there. And I think by and large, the board approves it because it's, I think it's the right thing to do. But in this case, it's not what I see. It's, I'm getting back to that statement of these, the thirty-thirty-two bit pieces are 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 much smaller than what's around it. And in summary, I I, you know, I'm persuaded by Mr. Ledger's testimony. If if I was there, I paid money for a decent-sized lot and I have a nine-thousand-square-footed lot by me, I do think I'm, I think even though Mr. Dolph, he has demonstrated, he does really good work consistently, I have every confidence, if a house goes in there, it's going to be a beautiful-looking house. He showed us a picture of it and that's that's the the signature of his good work. But what we're here for in the variance, I I think it's too much. I can't find support for it, really for the reasons stated around the table so far. That's where I'm at. I mean, I I didn't know if we need to go around again. I think we're having four, four members who aren't in support of this. I didn't know. I didn't know, Mr. JP had anything to say, or maybe I just call for a vote?
Just call for a vote.
Yeah. Could I task you, Mr. Shaw?
Sure. So this is again, for the owner estate of Nadine Trask. The applicant is Sequel Development and Management. The address is thirty and L for Land, Nagel Street. There are actually a total of five variances being sought. Three of them, again, regarding thirty Nagel Street. That is for minimum lot area, forty-five hundred square feet existing, six thousand feet, square feet required. Lot width, fifty feet existing, sixty feet required. And third, to maintain and keep a garage that would encroach seven feet into the seven foot required left side yard setback. And for the two that are applicable to the land on Nagel Street, minimum lot area, forty-five hundred square feet existing, six thousand square feet required, and lot width, fifty square feet exist, sorry, fifty feet existing, sixty feet required. All these requests are to be able to construct a new house on the lot at L Nagel Street. This is in the RB zone. The board does not, I'm going to actually treat all of these variances as one motion because I think that they're all completely intertwined and fully related. I don't feel that they merit or require handling in separate fashion. So that's the way I'm going to approach this unless there's any objection. So, all right. So I think that the board did consider the special circumstances of the fact that there is common ownership but of two existing separate lots right now that have, by all understanding and apparent history, have existed under common ownership for a very long time, perhaps since the beginning of when this area on Nagel Street was originally developed. And that the, the lots that were deeded out at the time also would have predated zoning and that these lots in their existence in the RB zone as the forty-five hundred square feet, fifty-foot wide lots, don't meet the existing code. And so to essentially divide the ownership ultimately and have two separate ownerships to pursue the construction of a second home and maintain the existing home would require these multiple variance sets of relief to accommodate that. And in this area of Nagel Street, many of the surrounding properties are already on lots which are larger than the required square footage. And so this is not keeping with the local character of the neighborhood and also would have significant effect on the property at thirty-four Nagel Street due to the placement of that home very close to the side yard setback or possibly slightly encroaching. So the board does not see how going from a single-family home occupying the existing nine thousand square feet to two properties occupying this on significantly undersized lots would be, would be something that is supportable and is too much relief being sought. So I don't believe it's within the spirit and tenacity ordinance. There is significant concern, although no expert testimony, but there is concern about property values being negatively affected. It is contrary to the public interest and substantial justice would not be served. So for those reasons, I, my motion is to deny these requested variances.
A motion, excuse me, a motion to deny the request seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion on the motion? A show of hands in favor of the motion to deny? For and opposed to the denial?
Right, and I'd just like to make a comment for the record. My vote to not be the majority is my ability to understand whether or not we or we have or I have, or in my opinion, the right to deny the right of the owner to legally develop a lot of existing record. That's my opinion.
So noted on the record.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll close the public meeting on thirty, thirty-two Nagel Street.
Thank you for your consideration, folks, and the kind words.
Are we ready to keep going? Are we good? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing on case number eight. It's Jonathan D. and Catherine M. Staveley, the owners at fourteen Marion Lane. The request is the following variances: to encroach one foot into the ten-foot required right side yard setback, and number two, to encroach twenty-two feet into the thirty-foot required rear yard setback. And both requests are to remove and replace an existing deck that is currently encroaching seventeen feet into the rear yard setback. Again, fourteen Marion Lane. This is Ward Nine in the R-nine zone. Hi, good evening. If you could give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Jonathan Staveley, owner of fourteen Marion Lane.
Welcome.
Thank you. And we're here today to request two variances. One is to encroach one foot on the right side.
Right side side yard setback?
Yeah, the setback, thank you. And in the rear, we want to encroach twenty-two feet into the thirty-foot setback. And we want to do that in order to tear down an existing deck and construct a newer deck. And the hardship we face is that the house is positioned in such a way that any type of deck that we build off the back of the house would require a variance because the house is only thirty-two feet from that, that back boundary line. In terms of the surrounding property values and the character of the neighborhood, we're simply tearing down an old rotten deck that's become quite an eyesore and replacing it with a newer safer deck that will be aesthetically pleasing. We are asking to make the deck approximately four feet longer, four feet closer to that setback or into that setback to accommodate a larger table and chairs. And that's, that's about it.
All right.
Do we have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Staveley?
I have a question.
Sure.
Took a look, you know, drive by your house.
Yes.
You don't really see much from the street, so I don't really have any feeling if there's an, you know, impact on the abutters or anything like that because it looks like it's kind of downhill and behind a fence. So I, I don't, I didn't see anything. I didn't know if, so it's a little hard, you know, you can't see behind your house. So I guess I just don't really have any opinion on, you know, if there's any significant impact to abutters or anything. I don't know. I didn't know if you had any comment on that.
We've talked to the owners of the homes on the right and the left, the Coffins and the Capicos, and they both seem supportive of the plan. We haven't heard anything from the condo complex to the rear, but there is a chain link fence and approximately thirty feet of woods between the back of our yard and the grass in the condo complex.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Stu? All right, no questions. That was kind of quick. Have a seat. Is there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed deck enlargement at fourteen Marion Lane? Anybody with questions or concerns? Hi ma'am, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and give us your name and address and let us know what's on your mind.
My name is Carla Benjamin. I actually am here on behalf of Killian Place Condominium Association.
Hi, welcome.
I work for the property management company that manages that association. And I actually have a picture of, of you from the backyard facing.
Actually, if you could pass it around, please. And we need to hold on to this then for thirty days?
Okay.
You could pull that microphone down a little so we get you loud and clear. That's good. I think you'll come through there.
The association has two concerns. One is that it encroaches too close to the property line and where the fence is. And if you'll note, there is a unit right there which would be unit fifteen on Killian Drive. And if they move that deck as per their variance request, it comes very close to that property. So the view of that property and the privacy of that property would be compromised. So we don't really see, see the hardship there. They already have an existing deck there. If the deck is being replaced because it's unsafe, we don't see why they would need to, to build a larger deck, why they are not just replacing the deck as it is.
We can ask them that question here in a moment. So again, Ms. Benjamin, you, I didn't, so the Killian Drive, those units, is that, that's all a condominium complex?
It's all part of Killian Place Condominium Association.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. And I, again, what's your role? Are you the property manager?
I work for the property management company, Elite Property Management.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll have Mr. Staveley just speak to your overall question. Are there any questions for Mr. and Ms. Benjamin? Mr. Lionel?
Looking at that photo, I don't, I'm not sure where on the property that's, that's taken from because I don't see the, anything like the existing deck that's claimed to be there.
It's very small to the left side of the photograph. There's a deck, existing deck there already.
Yeah.
And so I think what they're asking is to tear that deck down, come back towards our property, and then go out to the, well, their right, go out to our left.
Well, it, yeah, it's only the, they're moving the deck five feet closer to the property line. That's, that's the only issue that we're discussing. I don't, I don't see that deck at all in there, so I'm not sure from what vantage point.
Bring this picture around again.
It's hard to see. You can see it. It's just very small.
So this pic, this picture, this is the side of fifteen Killian Drive?
Yes.
And so this yellowish house with the porch, screen and porch is, is the Staveley home? Is that what we're seeing?
Yes.
I'll just bring this back to you, Mr. Lionel.
So what we're being told is this is fifteen Killian Drive? And this is?
Oh, oh, that, oh, I see. I got it.
Thank you, JP.
You're welcome. Okay, so this is you from the condominium complex into, this is, this is the homeowner's property, and this is their existing.
More of a screen porch.
Yeah, it's a screen porch.
Is that? Well, it looks, it's a screen porch, not a deck, so that's why I'm not sure if we're talking about the right thing.
There's an existing deck attached to this green porch.
Yeah, I think this is the wrong house.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll.
It's a four-season room.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, actually, if Mr. Lionel could you hand that to Mr. Staveley and make sure we have things.
I don't know. That's not our home.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That looks like eighteen, and if I guessed based on the color, I would say that's eighteen Marion Lane.
Yeah. Looking from Trune Circle probably then.
This is given me by the condo association. This screened-in, the yellow house is not yours. Okay, so, I was given this photograph by the association as, as, yeah, that's being requested. Yep, apparently not. So that being said, the association is prepared to file an appeal if the deck is granted, and then they would have their attorney and the association come and, and represent in front of the board. They're fourteen Marion, correct?
Right.
So this picture is fourteen Marion?
Right, then we have some fourteen Marion, I think, so. But anyway, we'll explore this a little further.
Yes, I actually have this, yes. And so on the map, on the site map, this is this house, and this is fifteen Killian, which is where the picture was taken. I don't know what this is. This is a.
I'm, I'm not sure. I'd like to hold on to this picture.
Sure, absolutely.
So Sharon, we also brought a picture of the background that you'd like to take down. And this one, this one actually shows that there's already an existing arbor there that predates our ownership of the house, which will be tearing down and moving the deck out. Sure, all right. I'll leave that one to you just for a moment.
Okay. I mean, this look, this is, this looks to me like the deck on the side of the yellow building. Is this arbor currently here?
Yes, it is. That picture was taken this afternoon.
Okay, so we'll have to go back to the association and make sure that this, they have given you the correct information.
Could, could we hold on to that one color picture though? Yeah, just, we'd like to have that on our record.
But we need the picture from Mr. Staveley also, right?
Yeah, I think you can leave that one with us also, right? Yeah.
The Killian Place wasn't available tonight, and the board president wasn't available, so I drew the short straw. So, yes, but they will be appealing if the, if the deck is approved, and so they'll file that application. And then the attorney, who is Brian Kelly, will come and take the case.
So while you're here, are there any other questions from Ms. Benjamin?
So just so we understand, the, the objection to, is it an objection to the extra four feet? Or is it an objection to the existing deck being there?
No, it's the objection to coming closer to the fence, the chain link fence, and bringing that deck and the burden of having it, you know, occupied and noise and additional closer to that unit fifteen on Killian Drive. It's just the bringing it closer.
And again, it's just an observation and just my observation, that's all. And again, it's all, it's all about perception, right? So it's just my observation. Because, because we see a lot of this and we look at this all the time, you know, there seems to be a pretty good buffer there compared to other applications we see, right? So I'm just trying, just trying to understand, you know, the.
The association's position is that it's going to come too close to the, to the visibility of what unit fifteen will see.
Okay.
And so they asked that, that we appeal this request.
All right, so, so it's a request that that's been made?
Yes.
Okay, so I better understand now. Thank you.
Yep.
Hold on there, Mr. Shaw?
I just want to let you know, procedurally, you don't get the right to just directly appeal a decision we make. You can file for a rehearing request if you don't agree with our decision.
Yes.
And then we will take into consideration whatever information is presented in that request and act on that to determine if we will rehear the case.
Okay.
If you're still not satisfied, then your next step would be to appeal to Superior Court.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure you're clear for.
I am not, I don't know the procedure. This is my first time at the, at the city planning board, so.
All right.
Any other questions from Ms. Benjamin?
I have a question.
Sure.
There's this arbor that's here that's a lot closer to the fence than a new deck would be. Why was there no objection to that? It's not going to take up any more room.
From the second picture, it looks like the arbor's gone, so I was given the color photograph saying that that was fourteen Marion. So if it is not, I mean, they're objecting that that is not a picture of their property, so.
Well, that's not, I'm, I think, in my humble opinion, I think they probably know their house. But if this picture was taken this afternoon, then the arbor must still be here. So I don't understand the objection. So I don't understand the objection. But that's just my comprehension, and the association has every right to object.
Any other questions? I think we're all set, Ms. Benjamin.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. You could have a seat. Was there anybody else in questions or concerns or opposition to the proposed deck enlargement? Mr. Staveley, could I ask you to come back up? I just... I think what we're hearing is... And I just want to be clear. You're saying that the picture we have here, this is not your house?
That is not my home.
Okay. Do you think it's number 18?
I believe it's number 18.
Okay, all right.
Number 18 is a yellow house, and... I'm sorry. I think it's 18.
Okay. Yeah, what... Yeah, okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Staveley?
I would also like to point out that the arbor in the back was once larger. And Killian Place Condominiums put up a fence maybe 10 years ago... No, maybe not 10 years ago, maybe five years ago, and asked us to... They told us we had to cut down a portion of the arbor, and they were completely happy with the arbor as is today when they put in that fence. I think this is a capricious argument or a capricious objection, and I think the fact that she presented you with the wrong house demonstrates that, that she doesn't really have an objection to the deck. She just has an objection to something being built along that property line.
Ms. McKay has a question for you.
Why would they ask you or tell you to cut down something on your property?
The arbor was there before we moved in, and one of our neighbors cut down a large number of trees. Many of the... Many of those trees were on the Killian property, which prompted them to put up the fence. And the arbor, we always thought, was on our property, but when we had... When they had a survey done, it turns out it wasn't. So they asked us to cut down the arbor to accommodate the fence. We cut down what they asked us to cut down, and they were completely fine with the arbor as is. They had no objections to that structure being that close to the fence at that time. And they're not going to be able to see the deck in the summer. They might be able to see it in the winter when it's not in use, but in the summer, that... The barrier between Killian Place Condominiums and our lot is heavily wooded, and you cannot see, at least not well. You can't really see the houses at Killian Place.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we're all set. You could have a seat.
Thank you.
Ms. Benjamin, by our rules, you have the final five minutes if you'd like to come back, or you could let your case rest if you think you've, you know, made your argument. So with that, with Ms. Benjamin letting her case rest, I'll close the public meeting and open the public hearing. Sorry, public... Close the public hearing and open the public meeting. And now that the public meeting is underway, who'd like to start off with the public meeting? Comments? Maybe I'll lead off this time. I... I... As I sit here, I believe that this photograph is not the Staveley property. I'm betting on it's number 18, and I've been wrong before. But as Mr. Boucher said, we see a lot of back and side yard encroachments, and the distance of Number 15 Killian from the Staveley property, I think, is pretty large. It's much larger than we see, and the testimony that this enlargement of the deck is not going to be seen in the summer and barely seen in the winter, I think that's the case. I... And if the information that I'm relying on is incorrect, then that's certainly a good reason for a rehearing request. But I believe there's a mistake with this photograph in that it's not the Staveley property. And I believe the Staveley property is situated with ample room behind it, that this rear yard encroachment, which is kind of a large encroachment and getting a little larger, is a non-issue because there's a lot of land behind it. And I'm okay with the application as it's proposed. There's my two cents. Mr. Boucher?
Also, I agree with you, and again, you know, I believe that for that width of that deck, the four foot extra that they're looking for is not impactful enough. I know that they're concerned. I think it was raised about noise. I don't think that the extra four feet to accommodate a larger table is going to create much more noise than if I was going to have six kids and have them run around screaming all day long in the backyard, right? So I guess I'm just trying to put it in perspective. I do appreciate the abudders being concerned, and certainly, you know, that's why we're all here. We all have our opinions, and that's why we serve, right? But in my opinion, looking at the buffer and having lived a couple of streets over for a long time, I've driven that street a lot, and I know that during the spring, summer, when it's in foliage, I mean, you don't really realize that there's... There's something behind there because it really looks dense as far as I'm concerned. So again, I don't see this rising to any power where there would be a hardship on the abutting properties, so I would be in favor of this application as it stands.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm supportive of it too. I mean, I think the thing is, this is kind of also consistent with several of these other homes that they're neighbors. All these homes, and many of these homes are Marion, especially the, like, 14 through 20, are all set back very far into the property already. And there's other existing encroachments and sheds and pools and whatnot that are already similar type of placement. And so actually, this rear corner where it's in question here on 14 is actually... I mean, 17 is... 17 Killian is probably the most affected, maybe 15 Killian somewhat also. But both of those are pretty far away from this, and I think for all the other reasons already stated, I don't see how the additional encroachment is going to cause any additional harm or impact to Killian Place.
Thank you. Mr. Lionel?
I am also in support of the request. I notice, note that the... Where 15 Killian is sort of diagonally opposite where this deck is going to be, meaning that there's a larger expanse of foliage between it and the deck than if it was directly behind it, and 17 is even further away than that. When that deck is in use, I don't think that either one of them could see the other.
All right. Ms. McKay?
I concur. I'm in support. And I keep going back to this picture, and this arbor is here. It's existing. It's closer. The four feet is not going to even come out as far, I don't think, as this arbor. So I don't understand, I guess, the argument, but they're entitled to their argument. I am in complete support of the application, and in my own backyard now you can see my neighbor because there's no foliage, but in the summer, I can't even see in his backyard because we have the trees that are there. And so this is even further, and these homes are pretty far away. I don't see the impact. I think that... I concur with my colleagues.
Just to comment, they're actually asking for five additional feet from 13 to 8.
Oh, I thought it was four. I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
You weren't the only one.
Actually, no, we just stick with the... Doesn't matter. I'm sorry, I was just deep in thought trying to identify where this picture is, and I'm changing my mind. I think this is... This yellow house is Number 20 because here there's a storm door, and if we look at the end of Triton facing 20, there's a storm door down on the left. And then this Number 20 has a structure on the left side which is abutting beyond. So that's just... I think... I'm feeling this is Number 20, not Number 14. But anyway, I'm sorry, I was lost in thought over that. Well, I mean, we've gone around the table. I think we have five folks in support of this. Is there somebody who'd like to make a motion? Mr. Lionel?
Do I know how to form the... Sorry, let me see if I can get it right.
All right. This is Mr. Lionel's first evening here, so...
Okay. I'd like to make a motion. Owner is Jonathan and Catherine Staveley, address 14 Marion Lane, and they are requesting a variance to encroach one foot into the 10-foot required right side yard setback and to encroach 22 feet into the 30-foot required rear yard setback to remove and replace an existing deck that is currently encroaching 17 feet into the rear yard setback. So there would be additional five feet. The variance is needed to create a slightly larger deck space. And for that purpose, they need the variance. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It does not adversely... We feel it does not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. There is apparently sufficient foliage between it and the setback and the parcels on Killian Place. It has no impact on public interest, and it would do justice to the homeowner to provide a more functional deck.
Motion on the table. Is there a second to the motion? Mr. Shaw? Any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor. So that's unanimous. So this... Your application, as you know, is approved. Then again, I just remind you that there's a 30-day window of appeal, so I would caution you to keep that in mind. If you have any questions about that, feel free to give Mr. Falk a call. And with that, I'll close the... Yep. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number... Lost my count here. Case number eight. Moving on, we have some minutes. We... The February 14th minutes. I have a few... Few changes. Did anybody have any changes on the 14 or suggestions?
I saw one typo on the 14.
Do you know what page that is on?
Page 28, very last page.
Okay.
Second line. It just should say "board," and it says "boor" on the "boor."
Did you get that on page 28? Yep. So the...
Where is it?
At the beginning where it says, "Mr. Shaw said," and then the next line down, instead of saying, "All his time on the boor."
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can make that change.
This is like one of those little things that won't go away because this was about me saying about what needed to be changed from the previous minutes.
Sounds like he's riding an animal.
So a couple of...
Maybe less humorous items?
No, I think mine... That's good. Mine, at the bottom of page 13, this is on 122 Manchester Street, and there is a series of definitions of different things that qualify elderly housing. The very last paragraph, which is, "Mr. Curry asked if any of the board members..." Board members, we got that right, "feels that this one meets the congregate living services," because that was the first definition. And then on the top of the next page, page 14, it says, "Mr. Curry said he sees some heads shaking no." Then my recollection was that there were five heads shaking no. There was... I didn't call for a vote or go around with each person yes or no, but for that first congregate living, then the next one, which is kind of the first full paragraph on page 14, the next one is assisted living services. The third one is life care or continuing services. The next one is community care facilities. And down at the bottom of page 14, Mr. Curry said the next one is continuing care or retirement. And then we're on to page 15, and then on the... When I say, "Mr. Curry said he sees two no's, three no's," well, that adds up to five no's. What I believe happened was it was... There were five no's on all of these, and the way the minutes are, it's not clear that that's the case because we were looking at each other, and we were shaking our heads no, and I should have emphatically stated in the microphone that there were five no's. And then on the final one, which is now like the bottom two-thirds of page 15, it says, "Mr. Shaw said this is the question for him that comes down to this last category, and that's where the discussion of that." So we had all of these categories with the last one being the middle of page 15. Prior to the middle of page 15, I recollect that we were all five no's on those other categories. And then the last one is where we discussed rather ad nauseam about the definition of that. And so what I was seeking in amendment in these minutes is to clarify that the board... There were five no's right down through where it picks up at the... "Mr. Shaw said the question for him comes down to care typically includes room and board supervision," and that the discussion ensued from there. So I would like to amend these that after each of those other categories before, it was no's.
It was. It probably... And I was the newest person on the board until Steve. You took my place. Thank you. This was the most thoroughly vetted case I've had the privilege to serve with all of you on. It was really detailed. You did go and ask each individual person for each individual item as we went down line by line by line. And I agree that it should be clearly stated that that's what we did.
One thing is like, these... As you can tell by reading this case, these were done pretty much verbatim. Probably 99% verbatim. One thing, since this is definitely going to go to court, they're going to listen to the tape, and they're also going to look at the minutes and probably compare them. So what we don't want to do, I think, is write in something that wasn't necessarily said. We know what we all meant in everything by the... Or what you guys meant by like the nodding of the head no and everything. I just think we should be cautious of writing something in here that wasn't actually said at the meeting because I think a judge could pick up on that, and they'll say, "Hey, you're embellishing here." But this one, I... Like when it said here, like, "Mr. Curry said he's seeing two no's, three no's." That's like exactly what you said. Most of these were pretty much exactly what you guys said. That's why this set of minutes was so long. But I know for future, I know we discussed this a little earlier, that I guess for future reference, like whenever we're going around, it's like everybody should have their names said in what they say. So like Mr. Lionel, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Boucher, so in other words, so you're exactly what people say.
These are real... This is really a transcript, not what I would call minutes.
Yeah, they're a transcript of what was said. I mean, full minutes when you have the, the numbers on the side, you know, like a court reporter would do, they're not the like. I do these in my, in my spare time. I just, I just write down what people say for the most part and I try to get.
Well, that's good.
I hit the high points. I mean, thi- this, this one case on elder housing was done about, pretty much what everybody said I wrote down. And I didn't, I tried to s- put, put it in like exact words, but.
Yeah, I, I, I agree absolutely that you don't want to put anything in here that wasn't said.
Said, right.
And if this is what was said, then, then that's what was said, yeah, I mean, the, but the outcome doesn't change, right? The outcome was the board voted against this, so.
I think it's clear, I do think it's clear where our focus was.
Yeah.
You know, even my statement about, you know, coming down to this issue. I think, I think there's enough of the discussion that it was like, we, I thought we went back and somewhere even, even validated that or verified it again later where we, uh, thought at some point said, just like, none of the other categories were of concern.
Very, very, very thorough. I mean, you guys went over everything with a fine-tooth comb with this case.
Well, you know, we've had this discussion on the record here where I, I think, I, I didn't, you know, and I'm glad the, the other board members are saying, yes, we were saying no on that, even though what we have a written record here, it, it doesn't clearly say that for all the categories. But, uh, so at, at least we've had this discussion and I'm, I'm okay leaving it as it is. I was thinking of not putting extra words in, but just saying something to the effect of heads were shaking, you know, there was a, you know, uh.
Yeah, I think it would, that would probably come down to looking at the videotape and could note then that there were, you know, observation from, you know, the video of heads shaking, you know, something like that, but.
Future, I guess, I guess it's a lesson learned in, in like, if we're kind of doing a poll around there to make sure it's. Into the microphone, so, you know, we've had this discussion, I'm okay and we can leave it as is.
Yeah, I, I think, um, as I recall, you might have been starting to look around the room, uh, you know, two no's, three no's, it's like you're counting as you're talking.
That's what.
And, and I think that's what that's really all about.
I think there were those kind of nods of agreement, either that we all were against something or we all were like, yeah, no's. But I think it just, it was very clear at the time, but it just didn't get verbalized. And now we, we recognize that that's something that should probably be a little bit more thorough on, on something like this that's, that's already being hashed out in a lot of detail.
There's three forms of the record, right? There's the video, there's the tape, and then there's this. And I think that if, if this is the only thing that existed, I think we'd be spending way more, we'd spend a lot of time on a lot of cases, right? Uh, but I think, again, you know, uh, it's not me that's disputed, but, you know, I, I would feel comfortable that they would also look at the video and then also look at the tape because, you know, sometimes expressions tell you a lot more sometimes than a few words, right?
Well, with that being said, I make a motion to approve the minutes of February fourteenth that's stated with the typo as noted by Mr. Shaw. Is there a second to that motion, uh, Mr. Shaw and all in favor of that? So that's, takes, that's approved the February fourteen minutes. And on the February twenty-eighth minutes, uh, and did anybody have any comments?
I just want to note where the, this is page twenty-eight. Okay.
So moving on to the February twenty-eighth minutes, um, were there any questions? I had one observation, it was actually on the very first case. Right when Mr. Prunier was starting, uh, Ms. Vitale wasn't present. And like right at the top, page two, you know, Attorney Prunier said he's objecting to proceeding with only four members, but will proceed anyways. I think it was very shortly after that, Ms. Vitale arrived. And, and so on bottom of page one, it says, voting on this case. I think that was written from, uh, Ms. McKay's transcript, which was probably filled in before the case actually started, but it's.
The copy is listed on the top of the next page.
What's that?
So it does list all five of us.
Yeah, it says seconded by Ms. Vitale.
No, but then the voting in this case, there's four people listed at the bottom of page one and the top of page two is this person.
I missed that, we're good.
It's just where it happened to break. Unfortunately, it just happened to break that way.
You know, the, looking at, at the bylaws, it only requires three numbers, so why, I mean, he, I don't know, just.
Save that for the bylaws discussion.
He wants a full board.
By ordinance.
So I'm, so with that, I'm, I don't have any changes with February twenty-eighth. I'm sorry, I didn't see her name, it carried over to the top of the next page.
Now, is, is she no longer going to be coming? Is?
Nope, she just.
No, she said she had a meeting.
Yeah, she just, uh, texted, uh, just before that she had a business obligation.
Okay.
So I make a motion to approve the February twenty-eighth minutes as proposed, seconded by Mr. Shaw, all in favor. So that's unanimous. So moving on, we have, uh, the proposed bylaws, uh, also the agenda too, so.
Yeah.
Actually, I want to do the agenda next. Uh, so we have Toll Street, Lane Street, Land at Russell Street and Central Street. Does anybody see any regional impact? I.
No.
This time we'll do it audibly. Mr. Boucher is saying no, Mr. Shaw is saying no. I say no, Ms. McKay says no, and Mr. Lionel is a no. So there's no regional impact.
I, I'm confused, aren't, didn't we table a couple of things to this meeting?
They don't show up on this agenda, this is what gets published by.
Published agenda, there'll be an amended agenda later. It'll show fifteen terrible of ours.
Yeah, and unfortunately, I won't be able to attend that meeting.
So moving on to the proposed agenda, we have, uh, like a redline copy with track, I mean, I'm sorry, the bylaws. We have a redlined kind of copy with track changes on and Mr. Falk provided a final version as well.
I think they're right with it, I think we do it at two meetings. This can be considered one meeting with all the changes on it and if you like it, we can take out the track changes and the next meet, the next meeting we can have a, a full version ready for signatures.
Is the only change in section fifteen?
No, there's one over there. Sorry, wasn't there?
Or, or, or in section five also?
Yeah, there was a minor correction in section five.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
Uh, it was really a typo, I think we would call that.
Section one had a, the dates, section fifteen.
And kind of a key thing is the section fifteen, as you noted, Mr. Lionel, about the appeal. It's a clar- we're not changing anything, I think we're clarifying that.
Well, fifteen just referred to the wrong entity.
Wrong entity. Yeah.
That's all. I'm, I'm good to go with them as is proposed.
So if we, uh.
Bring this next, next meeting will bring a.
The next meeting, though, I won't be at either. So, I mean, but the three officers will be here, so you guys could choose to vote on them or not in our absence. So I think it's really up to you. But considering the scope of these, I'd say just proceed and get this finished up.
They all can sign it.
Yeah, because you're the three that's signing.
It's also good to know that the two, two members who won't be here are saying they're good with.
Yeah, they're telling us.
Alright, is there any other business before the board tonight?
Yeah, we should have some more heat.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second to Mr. Shaw, all in favor? Alright. Steve, we pushing hold the, uh, little.
Yeah, I already provided that guidance earlier. And how to view from the, that's something that you can do.
It's a learned practice, it takes a while. Takes a while.